December State Board Work Session will now come to order. Denise, please call the roll.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Rachel Wise?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Patrick McPherson?
Here for the duration.
Glenn Flint?
Here.
Lilly Larson?
Present.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
John Wetzel?
Here.
Commissioner Bloomstead?
Present.
All present. Thank you. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Board members, please remember to engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're finished, and please turn off personal cell phones. Thank you. We'll move to item two, Board Reports, Dates and Discussion Items. And the first is to talk about any meeting participation and joint meetings with policy partners, and where have we been since November? Pat?
Well, I did go to the NASP conference, but I'm gonna let you all talk about that. The other thing-
If we choose.
If you choose. If you choose. The other thing, I spoke to the Retired Teachers Association and my, and Beatrice, and it's a very unique group down there. Probably they're all in their 70s or 80s, but, you know, I'm kinda inching up there myself. But the thing that I was so pleased about is they are so interested in what's going on in education. And even though they've been out of the field for probably, some of them, 20, 25, 30 years, but they still have a great deal of interest in what's going on in education. And so it was a very enjoyable time to spend with them, and they had lots of good questions. And I think, you know, since some of them were teaching, there is a different relationship between the State Board and the legislature and, you know, those sorts of things. So it was a very enjoyable afternoon. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else want to update where they've been in the past month? Molly?
Put the paper on NASP.
Yeah. I went to a Places meeting in Sydney, and it was really cool because it was distance learning. I had a choice, do I go to Sydney or Scotts Bluff? And for those of you not familiar with the territory, that's a couple hours. So Shadrin, Scotts Bluff, and Sydney all got together, but the ESU's are doing a tremendous job in western Nebraska. I do want to let you know that they really are excited about the revision in Shadrin with the pathways. They really wanna make sure they put an ask out there. As we develop technologies, Craig Hicks said he just really wanted to make sure on the Career Connections Portal and with Blend Ed that those kids in the sparsely populated areas are also able to virtually get some hands-on, it sounds funny, doesn't it, but hands-on education in career pathways. And some of these technologies are becoming available. They also talked about competency-based education, Glenn Flint, and they were really saying how they thought it was functional, and the kids were getting really engaged because it blended relevant futures with their education. And I guess there's two-way interactive virtual realities now with content resources. So my people in the ESU- the ESU-13 are really talking about how best to make technology available with limited staff and resources. And then I also went to the NASP Annual Meeting and the pre-conference, and I will be very brief about this, but I did want you to know that the, both Sharon Cotton and her husband, Rich, talked about policies to slow the teacher exodus, and they were amazing. I really would hope maybe they do a presentation to us. It was just fascinating, and they did it in like an hour, but they really talked about the value of teachers and how we need to do a better job of marketing what a great future teaching is, because these are the people that mold the future leaders in our state and our country. And they kinda have a good, I don't know if you ever remember Kelly Baker and how he would kinda go back and do presentations, but Rich and Sharon together are very informative. And I think they had some great ideas about slowing the teacher exodus, but they said we can't ignore, we need to recruit these new teachers, and we need to work on retaining the teachers we have, because it is a challenging environment. And that segues into my second topic that I'm briefly gonna share with you, and it's about the whole issue about behavioral, social, emotional health for children. It translates into improved academic achievement. And I've been trying to learn and listen to this more, and we've talked in Career Tech Ed how those soft skills are so important for employability, but in this social, emotional domain, they did some presentations, and Waverly was the group that presented it. Have any of you been to visit Waverly? They are doing a wonderful job with something called DESA, DeVRO Student Strength Assessment, and they have three different tiers. And what they do on that first tier, they actually train the teachers how to shape behavioral health of their kids and how to get along with each other, makes class go better, and the kids are more successful in their enterprises. And then they said that Tier Two is when you have kids having problems, that they have kind of group think and group talk, and it really helps them shape their time. But the ask from the people that I, that were at this meeting about social, emotional health for students, Commissioner, is that Tier Three. And they said especially in some of our sparsely populated places, Tier Three is where those kids, it's not enough just to have, here are the rules of the class, and here's some extra help. Some of them really have some mental illness, needs more professional help than our teachers are able to give. So that's the message I was gonna transfer to this team here. So let's slow the teacher exodus, retain valuable people, let's work on technology, and social, emotional supports will translate into more employable graduates. Thank you. Anyone else want to update?
I'll be very brief. I think I attended most of the NASB, NASB things that you did. What I was really impressed with was the quality of the speakers this year. And, you know, I kept thinking that, gosh, I'd like to have my grandson and a lot of students hear these speakers, because they were really inspirational. And so I guess, you know, and Rich Cott, again, I can't say enough about the job that he does, and I attended one of his sessions and was really impressed. And I think as we move forward with career awareness, you know, there's so many opportunities in that area, so, thank you.
John?
Good afternoon, everyone. I attended the annual NAACP banquet with Dr. Bloomstead and Dr. Freisen, toured and briefed on the Douglas County Youth Center. The Commissioner and I are working on some issues involving transferring of educational credits within the schools or within our community, and want to thank again Mark LaFonte for all of his work at the Youth Center for sure. Attended the Teacher Appreciation Day at the SAC Museum with a representative from the UNO School of Education. Dr. McGinnis is very excited about working with the NDE staff in regards to his STEM education programs. Lilly Larson and I attended the Commissioner's recognition of CE Excellence Award Ceremony at the Capitol with Acting Governor Foley officiating the event. Worked the serving line at the annual South Omaha Community Thanksgiving Bill, and also attended, with the other, my other members, if you will, the State Education Conference. And besides the Rich Cott and his wife Sharon doing an excellent job in the presentation, I found our state senators did a wonderful job in their presentations about the future of Nebraska's economy and budget, and outstanding. Attended the OPS News Conference at Wakanda Elementary School. Newly released state testing data, which NDE just released, showed that Wakanda and OPS are gradually moving up in regards to their grades, especially in closing the achievement gap. Very enthusiastic students at Wakanda, and I just want to thank the principal, Ebony Harvey, for her outstanding work in regards to where she's been for the last two years in bringing up the school standards. And probably most important of all, she's very proud of the culture that she's bringing forth to the school. Also attended a program at the Castillar Elementary School in South Omaha, superior test scores, and they have a renowned dual-language program that they are very, very proud of. Literally, students are waiting in line to get in this program at Castillar. Again, I want to thank Principal Adrena Vargas for a wonderful presentation by her students. Briefed and toured Howard Kennedy Elementary School. It's just been reorganized with a new principal and new teachers. It's a magnet school for music and is incorporated with the North 75 Project. Want to thank Tony Gunter, the principal, for all of his patience and all of his, if you will, kindness in showing us around. As a matter of fact, we were in a briefing with Tony, the principal, and all of a sudden a family from Honduras showed up, and they did not speak English. So he had to leave us and work that situation, getting that family organized, and the kids in school, and he came back. That's just the kind of dedication there is. Had a meeting with Mike Delaney, and also we got a lot of good information and updates at the NSCA Legislative Meeting yesterday. One thing I'd like to say about the tour of the Douglas County Youth Center in regards to, besides, if you will, transferable credits from that institution, if it's possible, we're also working GED, if you will, instruction for some of the students, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Lilly?
I think that NASB has done such an excellent job with the speakers, and it's evident because they had over 1,100 people attending that conference. My guess, the number will be 1,500 next year after these great speakers. Then I have something that probably most people didn't do. President Bowns has a reception prior to football games, and you may wonder, how does that apply to here? Well, lo and behold, the reception featured our Teacher of the Year.
Oh, awesome.
And so she was the guest speaker, did a spectacular job, and I was so proud of her, and as she said, my first football game.
Oh.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Just to add to some of the updates a little bit, thank you all for helping to be a part of the presentation at the NASB-NASA Conference that we do annually, and I want to thank both John Spots and Mike Delaney for hosting that conference and for our being able to attend to that conference. There were, as we all attended, some great sessions. There was a great session also Karen Hossi did around, I think they called it App Two in social media and what's happening with the use of technology and the challenges that it's presenting from so many different levels, and particularly in those levels that impact citizenship, bullying, all of those kinds of things that are important. So that was another great session. Also, I just wanted to comment from the NCSA Legislative Preview yesterday, Senator Matt Williams made an analogy as he was thinking about leadership, and he was sitting in a Presbyterian church, and they were installing new elders or trustees. And basically, the questions that were asked, he felt, were such fundamental questions for leadership. I felt that I would share what he reported out, and they basically were three questions. Will you serve with wisdom? Will you serve with imagination? And will you serve with compassion? And I think that his analysis is very appropriate for all of us to think about as well as we think about our leadership roles. So thanks, everybody, for their reporting out. We will move on to item two, and that is the meeting attendance requests that you have. You have in your e-meetings all of the upcoming meetings that are happening yet, and as well as we have a request for participation in, I think it's on there, I know we have the request, whether it's on the list or not. NASB will be having a stakeholder engagement forum or regional meeting, and we're trying to put a team together for January 15th, and Molly and John have agreed to be the two State Board members on that team. That team will include three other stakeholders that the Commissioner's working on. One will be a person from the department and two other stakeholders. So that meeting is coming up. If it's not on the list right now, as I'm glancing, yeah, there it is. It's on the list as well. That is paid for by NASB, and if there's some additional costs, we can use the NASB Standards Grant for that as well. So I just wanted to point that out. Any other questions about upcoming meeting attendance? Rachel? Yes.
I will be attending the 13th of December along with several people from the department on a commission that's being formed through the Buffett Foundation on early childhood. We're going to discuss the early childhood workforce.
Okay.
So that starts, and I think we're gonna meet four times a year or something. They're still kind of trying to figure all of that out.
Okay, if you'd just get that and add it up, have Laura add it onto the list for tomorrow?
It is on the list.
Okay, I was just trying to-
And it will be paid for-
There it is.
By-
Got it? Okay.
And just as point of information, I've signed up for the December 7th event noted here already separately.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding upcoming meetings? If not, we will move on to the monthly Board Travel Expense Report you have in your e-meetings, and we will move on to item three, Commissioner's Report and Agenda Overview. Commissioner Bloomstead?
I'll start with the routine business anyway, the consent agenda, so if you have anything to pull out the form, and you can deposit it over at that table there, and we will gather those up. If you did have any other questions, we'll organize staff for you as well, so just don't hesitate if you have any of those thoughts. So that's that part. The report on rules, that's actually in your, on PDF on the e-meeting site. You'll see on there that Rule 19 is one that we just signed, it's, excuse me, one that we just have scheduled a hearing day for, so that hearing will be on January 10th. And obviously, assuming that hearing comes through and we're able to bring something back, it would be February before that would take place. And there are three rules that were, that had come back signed from the governor, the Secretary of State, so Rule 41, Prime Minister of the Superior School, Rule 42, and Rule 44, so that's the extent of the rules activity on that report. Then I know we normally would have Donlin here, and we don't, say for Donlin, you know, we hope to have her back pretty soon and look forward to that, but it's been a pretty rough go for Donlin and her family situation. But the, I know there are a couple things I think to talk about with NASB relative to committee assignments for the National Association, so-
NASB would like identification in December of, because of their change in their bylaws, we now are ensuring that there's representation from each state on two committees, the Public Education Position Committee and the Governmental Affairs Committee. So we need two individuals to serve on those two committees. I guess I would like to volunteer for the Public Education Position Committee, since I chaired that committee the past year in this transformation of that committee and that committee's work. I would like to continue to stay on that committee. And then we have the Governmental Affairs Committee, and Molly has been on that committee and provided quite a bit of consistency and leadership, and previously chaired that committee as well, but we haven't discussed if you want to continue or, from a board perspective, what-
You know what, I would really like to put this on hold till the new president has appointed the chairman, because maybe the chairman of the Legislative Committee might want to also be on the Government Affairs Committee at the federal level, because it's very integrated.
So the requests from NASB were for names in December if possible. Just saying, that was their request out this week.
For those people that are still, if someone, those of you that are serving again, if any of you would like to try your hand on it, I would be happy to let you take my place. And if none of it, no one else wants to, I'd be happy to continue, but I think it's a wonderful-
Continue.
Oh. It's a wonderful way to understand what's going on at federal level. So if anyone else wants to, put their name ahead of mine.
Please, just let her know. We can think about it and come back tomorrow if you'd like. I just wanted to make sure with Donlin, as we mentioned, Donlin not being here, this is one of the NASB requests we need to get finalized tomorrow while we're here. All right, back to you, Commissioner.
All right. So the next thing on the, on the sleeve is actually a little update on ESSA, and with Matt and me, Ron Anzola, I took it up for that, actually, at the November meeting, we were gonna get to this, and it's quite interesting, because there's been quite a few updates I can tell you about since our November meeting happened. I will tell you, it's been really very nice to have both Matt and Ron take this on. I did this cool thing to Matt, who's been a little here, saying, hey, why wouldn't you help write that waiver plan for No Child Left Behind? And then I said, well, oh, Matt, why wouldn't you help lead the writing of this effort on ESSA? Actually, it's not unintentional at all. I mean, frankly, the expertise that was developed in writing that particular waiver plan lends itself well to the, we spent our time writing a plan that we thought is the direction that we wanted to go, and we certainly want to kind of continue that spirit. It's actually good we brought Ron Anzola on as a contractor for us to work on communications and be part of that strategy around the ESSA plan and writing them, also brings a level of expertise to our conversation, and also a thoughtfulness about how we go about furthering our engagement strategy. So I appreciate both their work, and they, I'm sure they're over-prepared for this presentation.
I'm not sure I've ever been described as over-prepared. Yeah, for the record, my name is Matt. He's when I work in accreditation and school improvement here at the Department of Education.
My name is Ron Anzola. I'm a contractor with NDE.
Great. So when I, when April and I were assigned the waiver, we were described as daunting, and that's true. With ESSA, it's been described as, you know, you have an impossible job here. So I went from daunting to impossible, so I'm up for a challenge. So we'd just like to give you a little update on where we are with the Every Student Succeeds Act, succeeds, not succeeds, Act here in Nebraska.
Succeeds.
Yeah, right, right, right. So, because there's been a lot of work since August. We have built a core team, a core writing team here across the department, and it's really moved in a direction that we felt like we could before the final regulations came out. So just to give you an update on the timeline and some of the organizational structure, and then some of the strategies for engaging our stakeholders across the state. Just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the core writing team, their names are on the screen. I can't say enough about the work that they've done thus far and continue to be so supportive and really so bringing me up to speed on some of the things in federal program in ESSA, and really done a nice job. So in addition to our core writing team, we have advisory groups that we rely on to help us guide our direction in the ESSA plan in the internal department. So with the Commissioner and the Deputy Commissioners, our communication team works with Ron, and it has been instrumental in guiding some of our communication efforts. Our team leaders and our subject men are experts across the floor, have all been providing input as we move forward. So what we don't want to happen is to be writing in isolation and then bring something out to stakeholders, bring something into the department that is a surprise. We want everybody's input on board and to be able to be very thoughtful and strategic about how we develop and implement ESSA over the course of the next couple of years. So one of the things we've been working, as we've been building out our components of ESSA, we've been given a draft template. Now, the final template has been released this week along with the final regulations. We've been working with proposed regulations and a proposed draft template to submit to. There's been a few changes from the proposed to the final regulations. I have not read all 383 pages of the final regulations yet that were released Tuesday, but we intend to dive into those and look at some of the differences. The biggest differences are some timeline changes, which benefit us, too. They moved back a little bit, so that's, that's been beneficial or will be beneficial for us. But really, the draft template or the template is composed of, is organized into five components. The coordination consolidation, the challenge academic standards and academic assessment, accountability support and improvement for schools, support of excellent educators, and then supporting all students. And what's fantastic about this, and really exciting to be where Nebraska is currently positioned ourselves, is that work really flows. It's a slice of a bigger picture that flows through our AQuest Accountability System, and then right directly to the strategic plan. So all of it connects and aligns, and so many of those components, if you really look at them, align so nicely with the tenants of AQuest, and that's an attribute to the work done at the board level and across the department and across the state, truly, as we've built the accountability system under AQuest. So these are timelines that we have been working as a core team, as our writing continues. We anticipated the final regulation out by December, and they were a day early, so we were right on there. In March, we have intended to have a public-ready draft, but that public-ready draft will include engagement with stakeholders across the state from now until March, so that we're very thoughtful in how that we're, how we're developing that plan. From March, after the public-ready draft, continued stakeholder engagement, where we have a final draft that we had scheduled for July based on a July submission date, that date has been moved back to September. And so that's something we'll talk with the advisory team to further think through timelines, because that gives us a little more flexibility, too, so.
Do you want questions as we go through?
Sure.
Just a quick question, did they move back both timelines? I think one was originally March.
Yes. The first timeline was moved back to April 10th.
Okay.
So they moved, 10th may or may not be correct.
So they moved both timelines?
They moved the second one back by almost two months, and the first one back by a month. So it's still, yeah. And so then we intended on the final draft, and, but again, I feel like the work that's gone on thus far with the draft that we've been assembling is taking pieces that we already have in place and then align with those components and start dropping them in. And so a public, a March public-ready draft, I think, is exciting, because that gives us a lot of time to still have discussion, and like you said, Pat, there's so many, people like to talk about education, and it's an engaging way to have a conversation with some very real and intentional outcomes that we can align with what we're doing here at the Department of Education. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ron. Ron is handling some of our stakeholder engagement efforts.
Yeah, thank you very much. One of the exciting things, and this is kind of small, so I'll talk through a visual aid, but you can look at your copies for the timeline of engagement. We have built it into our project charter. We really wanted to focus in how do we, where do we begin from, and obviously the end date being submission of the plan. Initially, we broke it into four phases, knowing that we in Nebraska, as opposed to many other states, as we discovered on a couple of national conversations we've been on that I'll get to, are in a continuous feedback loop stage, where we're not creating a brand-new vision for the state, nor are we proposing to change a vision, but we're entering with ESSA into a built-in, the AQuest system and some of the other plans that are put together, already built in and are doing a lot of the work, and we're capitalizing and leveraging it for our ESSA plan and communication. So our Phase One was the creation of a strategic vision for ESSA specifically, for the Every Student Succeeds Act. It took us between June, where the creation of the advisory team was, until October to develop both project charter, guiding our work as a team in light of our work with others within NDE and outside of it. It also took us with CCSO to Atlanta in September 13 and 14, where several of the core team members attended, developing a coherent ESSA consolidated plan to advance equity. There were 45 other states in attendance, and it was a two-day, some hands-on, but a lot of presentations and workshops around how to think about utilizing ESSA and leveraging ESSA to advance equity for the states. At that point, we saw how unique Nebraska is and its position of both being in this continuous loop, having a vision that's been working and moving forward, as well as utilizing ESSA in some of the conversations that have been going on across the state around both equity assessments and accountability. The second large meeting that we were engaged in was kind of a privileged engagement through the Wallace Foundation in September '26 and '27 with five other states, Tennessee, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, and Ohio, and this was around advancing leadership. It's called ELLC, ESSA Leadership Learning Community. That work was done both in New York and then with representative from both CCSO- That work was done both in New York and then with representatives from both CCSO and the Wallace Foundation, the commissioner, OPS administrators, as well as Chief Orin from the Urban League, both in New York and several meetings here in Omaha, to discuss how to use leadership opportunities within ESSA to advance equity as well and support all teachers as well as all students. Our work is currently in Phase 2, which, if you look at the second box, we named it the Planning and Development, in which we are working on the draft template, now the final template that was released, as well as working with different team leaders and the communities that they were, the stakeholders that they have to present about the ESSA and the work as we move forward and how to engage them better publicly. The third phase that we're moving towards is the draft reviews. We're looking for this phase to be between November and, I mean, between, we're currently between November and March engaging stakeholders across the state. The third phase between April and June will incorporate the draft reviews, excuse me, as well as work group sessions, where people can take pieces of the ESSA and help us review and edit. And the final session will be the submission, including a draft for the board prior to a final submission. We are planning to go on a statewide tour as well as coordinate. And we have dates now with specific communities in January and February to present about ESSA. But we're doing it publicly currently with our, next slide please, webpage. We have a webpage. That webpage is housed at, it can be accessed through the department's homepage. It has information, including the timeline, which will be amended based on our conversation with our advisory group. It also has an email, a help email, which we've shared and have, people have been utilizing and communicating with us how they can be involved, as well as through phone calls. There's a lot of people out there that would like to find a role to be involved, and we're finding ways for them to participate. And that's where we are today with ESSA.
Sorry. Molly. Ron and Matt, would you like to have board members attend stakeholder meetings in our districts? And if so, could you make sure that Laura gets those dates and sends them out to us?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. That was the intent of those, is that involvement is critical.
I have to say this for Lilly, because Lilly's not going to be able to say this after this month. We need to get this on our calendars. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions? I've got a couple of questions. Maybe if you could expand a little bit on who you're reaching out to when you talk about stakeholders. Could you describe who the stakeholders are and what your strategies you're thinking about to ensure that it is really representative members of our communities and?
I think that's one of the things that, having Ron on board, is because we have our traditional set of stakeholders we typically reach out to, and expanding that to be more strategic, I think, is part of what Ron's expertise brings to the table.
So we wanted to be very deliberate. And initially, we started with the team leaders across the department to find out who their stakeholders are, so we don't reach out to people without, we wanted a two-way communication process. So in reaching, we conducted a little survey with the team leaders, asking for who their stakeholders are and how do they communicate with them, what are the best ways. We formulated that the majority communicate with listservs or through NDE bulletins. But everybody has their own stakeholders committees or meetings scheduled. We tried to get on as many agendas as we could to present both the website and introduce ESSA to those committees, as they're talking about or hearing through their input. We've currently done it with the federal program Committee of Practitioners, which houses about 30 individuals across the state from different areas. We've done it with early childhood. We were invited to early childhood. We have raised it with team leaders, who've shared it with their stakeholders. And in January and February, we'll be joining other team leaders' meetings. And then we've also looked at who isn't formally engaged with the department and how we can further engage them. What we found is that the majority of administrators and teachers, educators, are formally engaged with the department, as well as key influencers, as we discovered through the strategic plan, key influencers and individuals that are engaged. And we wanted to find out how do we engage both parents and students? And then how do we engage community members? Which helped us very much with the Wallace Foundation incorporation of the Urban League. So Chief Orin was very much able to open up a lot of doors for us and make it more formal for communication, which now it's in the process of developing both invitation to specific events, as well as coming to specific events of communities across the state and presenting ESSA to individuals that may not be formally partnering with NDE now. Another one is looking at the three priority schools and using their communities to leverage other communities, both in support and in a deliberate two-way conversation. And those are now being formalized. We wanted to really develop a communication strategy. So we're working closely with the communication department to, they've developed templates, as well as KDB, we've developed our webpage and the logo for ESSA.
Lilly? And Matt?
Is there a possibility that the stakeholders contacted by FSG? That that, you ought to use that list? And I mean, if you go back to them and say, they'll say, but are you sure you just weren't here? So.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Use that as a benchmark start with, for sure.
Yes, yes.
Don't forget going to the PTAs and PTOs. They're just, those, you know, you've only got, got 80% of the people in communities don't have kids in the schools. So you've got to reach the parents and you've got to go to the schools.
And we participated in a number of webinars with the National PTA, both encouraging and offering resources and strategies on how to communicate. We've updated their website with our webpage, so it's available on the National PTA site. And we're trying to formalize a lot of these relationships using the expertise that exists at the department now with the team leaders. So, thank you.
Pat?
I'm glad to hear you say that, Lilly. I think, you know, and I'm glad to hear what you're doing. I think we have struggled to engage parents particularly. But I'd also suggest, you know, go after some other community leaders. Go after the elected leaders in the community that really, I think, you know, have some solid thoughts on what we need, economic development, other, you know, training, those kind of opportunities. So you might make a real effort, really going after elected leaders in the community, county board members and city council members. So for whatever it's worth, I'd like to see that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great feedback.
Probably the one question I have is maybe back to the original slide. When you do the stakeholder engagement meetings in the communities and reach out, can you just kind of describe what your thoughts are about how you are going to approach gathering input for the plan? Because I think one slide you showed initial gathering input, and then you showed going back again, I believe, if I, yeah, there you go, that one.
Yeah.
So is there, what's kind of, can you describe what you're thinking about in your initial stakeholder? What you're looking at versus the continued case?
Well, I think personally, in order to have a rich and meaningful conversation, one has to understand what ESSA means. And so unless you build that understanding initially, the conversation after that is going to be useless. And so that first, I think what we see that as being is that initial conversation as a really way, a way to build capacity and understanding. So we have a shared understanding of what ESSA is and that that slice of the puzzle that it plays in our school districts. And unless we have that common understanding, community-wide, then the second, the re-engagement where we're talking more specifics doesn't make sense to our stakeholders outside of education. I think sometimes in education, we speak education ease and maybe don't always communicate as effectively as possible. So that's, I think, the attempt there.
And I think to add to it, the initial is just an understanding of what this law is, what this act is, and what it replaces and what it means in terms of Nebraska, using hopefully a draft also to discuss those specifics. But the continued is that review and the work group analysis of the different components, helping us formalize a final draft, knowing that this is an, this will fit into something already in existence in the state, which is both the AQuest and the strategic plan.
Molly? And I did have one request. When you go to my district, Western Nebraska, oftentimes NAASB meets in Valentine for an area meeting, in Skosklaup and North Platte. And if you choose to follow that paradigm, you'll get, for example, in my district, different areas. But if you do that, will you please make sure you have a virtual connection with other ESUs? Because some people don't want to try out. Is that possible?
Yeah, for it, I, location.
Yeah, wherever you get your triad, or like in my huge area.
Right.
People work all day and they might not be able to drive. But if you don't invite them virtually, they'll be feeling neglected.
And in conducting those meetings, we're engaging with our ESUs.
Thank you.
So they'll be able to help provide some of that support virtually, as well as in person. Yes, absolutely, Molly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Commissioner, did you have anything else under item three?
I'll just kind of highlight, I mean, this also isn't being done in isolation inside the department. So we have a kind of an implementation, and I call it, I kept calling it, our convergence plan, right? So I want to build the longer-term communication strategies and engagement strategies through this work. It's giving us a good opportunity to engage with communities that we haven't traditionally engaged with or we haven't done as effectively as we want, and looking at different strategies that are taking place across the country. And I know that you all went to NASB and had those types of conversations. And so what we looked at were those opportunities and like, somebody like Reg Lackey, who's actually, you know, also under contract with us. I'm having Reg look at what we're doing, those strategies, what else are we hearing? The changes that have been somewhat put into the final, you know, we call them final regulations right now. That can still change. I always could highlight that with the change of administration. But the reality is, I still think this is doing the right work for our strategic plan and for our state. And these engagements that I think we are all concerned about, do we have the right people engaged across the state, is critical to us. And we'll learn. We won't probably get it all perfect, but we'll keep learning. So if you have other thoughts, don't hesitate to share those, and we can find ways that we continue to expand that work.
Thank you, Commissioner. If there's another questions, we'll move on to item four, which are standing and ad hoc committee reports. And the first is under Teaching and Learning Domain Committee. Anne Marie, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, the Teaching and Learning Committee had one action item on the agenda today. And the item is to consider a request from Friend Public School to waive sixth grade, at sixth grade level athletic competition restrictions found in Rule 10, Section 004.02(c). And committee members were informed of Rule 10 requirements from the staff and how the requirements were established. And we've asked Frida Lang to come in and share much of the same information with the rest of the board, because we found it very informative before we make a decision on where we're going to be going with this request. So Frida, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Frida Lang from Accreditation and School Improvement. And when we were, about five weeks ago or so, we were contacted about the possibility of waiving this section of Rule 10, which involves the using sixth graders in competitive events. Primarily, I think that's the key word there, is competition. Before, you know, that decision is made, I think, to understand where that section of Rule 10 comes from is done in committee. You know, prior to anything going into Rule 10, we will have ad hoc committees come together. And in this particular setting, there were physical education teachers, there were administrators, there were a physician, we had NDE people, but people involved with this aspect of education. And as they conversed, some of the things that they were looking at largely were the social, emotional, and the physical aspects of students. And so when the decision was made to say that sixth graders would not be used in competitive settings, it was from that information that was coming together, that in many cases, they are not developmentally ready for that. So that's, and then when we have it drawn up, that requirement is brought forward to the State Board of Education, and it goes to hearings and so on and so forth, until finally, it is decided, yes, we want to move forward with this section. And then it's sent to, ultimately, to the Attorney General, tested for constitutionality, and the governor ultimately signs it into a rule and regulation. So that's basically the, kind of the background of why it was there. When we looked at this particular waiver request, the section itself says that there, you know, if you have 12, fewer than 12 girls or fewer than 12 boys, that you may bring up sixth grade, which is, you know, maybe concerning, but at the same time, part of the equity issue here was that when you look at many of our rural schools, and I think specifically of, say, our Cody Kilgores, those where you may, it may be 30, 40 miles to the next district, one of the options of allowing students in those small settings to compete in seventh and eighth grade would be to co-op. But in some settings, that's prohibitive. We did look at the situation at Friend, and there are school districts that are relatively close. So that was, we did try to come up with options, such as co-opping the programs. The other aspect of it is, and in this case, they, with student membership records that were brought in, they do have 12 students. So they are already in regulation, so that they can, well, that they will use seventh and eighth graders without needing to bring up the sixth graders. And in the waiver request that was, is in the support material, it was also noted that there were, I think, five girls that were coming out for it, which would field a team. And I know some of the concerns were, you know, what if somebody is ill or whatever? But I think even in a larger system, sometimes this happens. So anyway, those were some of the things that we were looking at. So I think I basically have given you some background as to why that restriction is within Rule 10, how it came to be, and then also the situation in this particular request and some of the options that we have proposed.
Are there any questions from any of the board members regarding this? Lilly?
It's not a question. Based on what the rule is, the rule is what it is. And so from my point of view, that's what I would support. But at the same time, I think if you have students and you have a need for them and they want to do this, that's a whole different issue. And I question that whether you can categorize and say, all sixth graders are not socially, emotionally, physically able to do this. Because I think that sports have become, through the years, that sophistication by students in sports has really increased. So I don't frankly, if the rule weren't there, I'd be more sympathetic that if, not forcing students to do this. But in fact, if they really want to, that's a whole different matter. And I have, I'm aware of other cases where students have been restricted to not be allowed to do certain kinds of sports. And I think that actually, down the road, the rulings should be reviewed. Thank you.
Rachel?
No, I think just from the committee discussion and the rationale on the recommendation, I think, you know, that the committee looked at was really based on the way the rule was written. And the rule was written around size, in particularly, a number of students. And I think that was an important point, is the rule was written based on input from an ad hoc committee, that 12, fewer than 12, is a size in which consideration would be given for sixth grade.
Well, as a result of the information that was presented and the established requirements around Rule 10, the committee recommends denying the request on the action item tomorrow. Does anyone have anything they want to add before we move on? The remainder of the agenda included committee discussion items, including a brief overview of the draft goals for the strategic vision and direction from the Strategic Planning Committee, which will be reported on by that committee, I believe, at a later time. In other business, last month, the committee met with Senator Crist on the topic of civics education. And it was a lively discussion. And we discussed the connections with goals with our strategic plan. The committee received an update from staff today on social studies-related activities, including civics education. And staff will share more information tomorrow in the business section before the presentation that we have from the Elm Creek students that will be giving a presentation. The committee reviewed an update from staff on the revision of the science standards in preparation for the standards to come to the board for approval in September 2017, which isn't all that far off. But I'm going to ask Cory Epler and Sarah Cooper to come up and provide the board. We felt it was important for the board to hear further information on the revision process. Thank you, Cory and Sarah.
Thank you. For the record, Cory Epler, the Senior Administrator for Teaching and Learning.
And Sarah Cooper, Science Education Specialist.
It's hard to hear that it's coming up fast, because my heart started beating just a little bit quicker at that. But we are really excited about the progress that we've made on the revision to Nebraska's science standards. The current standards were adopted in 2010. And like we mentioned, we are on target for State Board approval in September of 2017. Providing a handout, it's also an e-meeting, just to give you a few key updates on the process, share with you a few key decisions that have been made, and then just review the timeline as we move forward. As far as the process update, much of the work this summer was really around the engagement of higher education in the process. And so we have feedback from over sixty higher education representatives from our university system, our community college system, our state college system, and our private and independent colleges on the content that should be reflected in our K-12 science standards. And our writers will use that to inform their work in ensuring that the standards, when completed, would provide an opportunity for a student to enter into post-secondary, credit-bearing coursework without the need for remediation. Our writing team has met four days, two in October, two in November. We've actually met at Rose Sanctuary, which is a great site out in Gibbon, to work on science. And headed a little further west than we usually do for science writing, which has been good as well. And then our editing team will meet two days next week. So consistent with other process, we have a larger writing team. And that is the second and third pages that are attached are our members on that team, as well as their affiliation, their school, post-secondary institution, or other organization. If you see a number behind their name in parentheses, that represents their ESU that they are representing as well. So we wanted to ensure appropriate distribution across the state. And Sarah worked really hard to ensure that we had representation from all ESUs. I wanted just to talk through a few key decisions that the writing team has made. And I will reiterate that these are decisions that the writing team has made. These are the educators that are in our classrooms, that are living and breathing it every single day, that are beyond passionate for science education, and are really wanting to raise the bar for what we do. So the decisions that have been made have been group decisions. They're not Sarah and I. These are the decisions of our Nebraska teachers, which I think highlights the impact and power of our process that we use here in Nebraska. One of the first decisions that was made is that our standards and indicators will be written at grade level for K-8 versus grade bands. We included in the document that our current standards have grade bands, and you can see those in the document. But our writing team really was passionate about that K-8 being written at grade level. And we support that decision. We think that'll really support our, this quality teaching and learning across all districts, and really support our students, especially those that are highly mobile. The second piece was, back, I think, a year ago, we introduced the idea to the State Board around a three-dimensional structure and framework for standards, specifically within science. So not just thinking about content, but also thinking about science practices and engineering practices, as well as those cross-cutting concepts that are throughout all areas of science. And so our writing team and our writers have been charged with indicators that are written in having that three-dimensional structure. So one of the current feature, one of the features of our current standards is that inquiry is its own strand within the standard. But when you think about that, inquiry should be embedded across all standards. So that really gets at that idea of embedding science and engineering practices across all standards at all grade levels, so really making sure that it meets that requirement. The third bullet there, I'm going to let Sarah talk a little bit more about in terms of our decision at the middle school level, and really, probably one of the biggest decisions, I think, we've made thus far.
And this was a sticky point. We had a lot of conversations about what that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade should look like. There's a split across the state of our districts that teach in domain-specific for sixth, seventh, and eighth. So they might do life science in sixth, and physical science in seventh, and earth science in eighth, or any combination thereof. And then we have other districts that use an integrated approach. And what we're seeing from the research is that integrated approach is actually more effective. It allows us to combine content. So for example, there's plenty, there's lots of earth science and life science that are very closely related. So instead of teaching those separated in isolation, you teach those together, which gives students a better understanding of those concepts at cross-domains. And it's also more efficient in terms of teaching material, that you're combining those concepts. So the research really supports that. We talked long and hard with those middle school teams and with everybody across the board about that, what an integrated model would mean. We had lots of conversations about that we know this might not be easy for districts, but we do believe it is the best thing for our students. Especially in those middle school years, when they're trying to make decisions about whether they're going to continue to take science or not. One of the things we've looked at very closely with that sixth, seventh, and eighth is thinking about the cognitive ability of those students. There's a difference between the sixth, what a sixth grader can comprehend on a time scale and systems perspective, and what an eighth grader can understand. And so really looking at, you know, what are the concepts that a sixth grader can grasp conceptually versus an eighth grader? And also looking at the math, especially with the physical science, knowing how much that supports our understanding of physical science, that sixth grade math, let's not put physical science concepts in sixth grade, that they don't have the math yet to support their understanding. So we're really excited about that, and we know it's going to be a transition and a big conversation piece to have with our districts as we move toward that integrated model for those that aren't. The other benefit to that is in our districts that teach in the domains in sixth, seventh, and eighth, in eighth grade, they spend a lot of time reviewing then material for NESA, for our statewide summative assessment. And the ability to build on concepts throughout that time period should eliminate that need to spend class time reviewing, because they'll be getting life, earth, and physical science every year.
It will be a big shift for schools, and we recognize that. So one of the things I shared in committee, that in addition to writing standards and indicators, our writing team is thinking about support documents that our schools will need. And so we recognize that we're working on a policy document in terms of standards and indicators, but there's a lot more work that we'll be doing as it relates to science education. So we are certainly excited about that shift at the middle school level. The fourth bullet, we are using the feedback that we have received from our higher education content experts to ensure that the content in our standards is appropriate, relevant, and accurate. Again, I mentioned the need for successful transition into some of these gateway courses at the post-secondary level for science. So as we think about anatomy and physiology.
Microbiology, chemistry.
Microbiology and chemistry. Those tend to be three of the bottleneck courses that we hear from our post-secondary where students struggle. So we're using the syllabi from our post-secondary institutions to ensure that there is that logical building point from what they leave in high school. If they were to enter into post-secondary anatomy and physiology, are they ready for it? And have we ultimately prepared them with that? So the feedback from our post-secondary institutions is critical. The final piece is, in light of the conversations around civic readiness, we've actually asked our writing team to consider what that means within the context of science. I think that the label civic-ready, or career-ready, or college-ready requires a certain level of intentionality. And so Sarah and I are really passionate about that. And so we've asked our writing team to think about civic readiness through the context of science. And we really think science is a great place for students to exercise civic readiness as we think about getting them to ask questions, to solve community problems, or issues facing their, our state or our country. So we're not quite sure what that's going to look like, because we're just going down that path. But we wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we are being intentional and asking the writers to think more explicitly about civic readiness through the context of science. The last piece on the paper is just some updates moving forward. We are working closely with our higher ed folks, because we recognize they will sign off and validate these standards. And we have a call next week with representatives from the university system to start those conversations, to make sure they're aware and that they're comfortable with that work. In February, we'll engage business and industry as we think about the career readiness nature of our science standards. And then our hope is that we'll open up a public input survey in May to get additional public comment on the draft. And then we will also host face-to-face meetings and virtual meetings in August. And we feel really confident that we'll be here in September with a draft that a State Board will ultimately approve. So we feel really good about our timeline. We can't say enough about the team of teachers, the educators that are in the room. It's, we come back and we're excited, because they are committed to doing the right things to advance science education in Nebraska. It's a truly remarkable process, and we're glad that Nebraska has the process that we do.
Molly?
I'm just kind of curious about how this is going to be in alignment with our new eleventh-grade ACT test. Is there, I know they are thinking about state standards. So as you're constructing them, are you in any sort of conversation with them?
Them as in assessment or ACT?
Yeah, assessment, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. And I think the.
That seems to be a huge, hugely important point.
The answer to the question is, we don't know, because we haven't done in alignment with our current standards to ACT yet. But we also recognize that our 2017 standards will be a big shift from our 2010. So I think there, to be quite honest, is probably a concern that the eleventh-grade ACT, as it relates for science, may not accurately reflect Nebraska's science standards. However, I will say that we are committed to thinking about how we create assessment opportunities throughout all, all grade levels, so that the focus isn't on that summative exam. That's one thing that I'm so thankful to have Sarah leading this effort, because she's extremely passionate about that. And that our motto is that if, you know what, the ACT doesn't really measure those standards, is the alignment isn't as close as we would like, we're confident that we have, we know we have work to do to build an assessment system that will ultimately help our students and our teachers relative to our Nebraska standards.
I guess my, my just kind of coordinating thought on that is, we never want to teach to a test. However, this is a huge endeavor now, that we've chosen to have the ACT be the benchmark for reading, writing, math, and science. And it just seems to me that you probably should know the competencies that are going to be measured and make sure that the students have at an appropriate time to acquire the knowledge they will be tested on.
Well, I think that's one of the challenges with the ACT, is that for science, it isn't necessarily testing science content. It's testing science reasoning.
Yeah, reasoning.
So as we think about that content, and going back to this idea of students transitioning into a biochemistry course, or anatomy and physiology, or a chemistry course at a university, they need to know that content. So that's part of, I think, the reality that we're going to live in with the ACT is that, and ACT will say it's test science reasoning, as opposed to the content within the standards. So I am.
I'm glad about that, though, because remember the, and this is my last thing, but remember that day that you said, we were talking about the civics test?
Mm-hmm.
And you said, we don't want superficial checklists. We want to make sure they know how to think for themselves. So if you're teaching the principles and the reasoning, it just seems that will lead to students that do acquire knowledge.
And that three-dimensional structure of the standards really lends to that. Because one of the, we're asking students to argue from evidence. We're asking them to analyze and interpret data. Those are the kinds of things that they do on the ACT as well.
I think your integrated approach sounds good. But that's going to have a fiscal impact on the districts, and it's going to have a, probably a fairly major impact on just redesigning curriculum, if I'm not correct. It would seem to me that you're going to need to do, if you haven't done it, going to need to do a lot of preparation with the district leadership to really let them know what's coming on this and the impact of that. And beyond that, again, you know, I keep coming back to getting the parents included in these things. And, you know, I hope we do a much better job than we did on the math standards, okay?
Well, and one idea, and I'll give Dr. Fryson credit, because as we were talking about this in a team leader meeting, where she suggested crafting up a two-sentence blurb and emailing it to the principals to put in their newsletters. You know, that user-friendly, just, hey, please put this in your monthly newsletter for public comments. So I think I agree a hundred percent. And one of the things on the domain piece, that we have a lot of districts that are already doing it. And that's what's interesting, is that shift at the middle school will be big. But most, I would say, there's a good number of districts that are doing it.
Marie? Rachel?
Yeah, I just kind of like to respond also to Pat's comment. This might be a good time for us to continue to think about how we build that content repository, digital repository, and those resources. And this appears like the sixth, seventh, eighth grade integrated approach would be a great way to help get some of those resources out statewide. So it actually might create an opportunity, as opposed to just a disadvantage as we move forward.
Anyone else? Cory and Sarah, you've had a lot of work out in front of you, and thank you. And you know what? September will be here.
Yes. Yeah, exactly. It's just a cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, in terms of assessment in our domain, the committee received an update on the standard-setting process for the ACT in anticipation of a decision by the board on standard-setting in August of 2017. And also related to assessment, the committee received an update on the proposed timeline for the request for proposal for statewide testing for grades three through eight. And we've asked Jeremy Henninger to come up and share a little bit more information on this to the rest of the board.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jeremy Henninger, Assistant Director of Statewide Assessment. Just want to kind of give you update on where we are with the RFP in that process for assessments. We'll be releasing the RFP in December, later this month. Yeah, we are in that month, yeah. And that will cover general assessments for grades three through eight, and alternate assessments in grades three through eight and eleven. As you know, the ACT will cover the general assessment going forward for the, for the students at the high school level, but we'll still need that alternate assessment for the most severely cognitively disabled students at the eleventh grade. So that, the RFP will cover those two different groups. The general philosophy of this RFP that we put together is to really take advantage of new regulations from ESA, and then also the advancements of large-scale statewide assessments that we've seen across the country. There's been a lot of technological advancements and those types of things. And really, we're opening this RFP up. In the past, the RFPs around assessment have been really pretty prescriptive in nature. This is what we want. This is what we want, this is what we're looking for. And this time, we're really trying to open it up and let vendors show us what they have and say, "These are all the different things that we could do around assessments," and really propose some different and innovative things, assessments, and perspectives to come at this from maybe from different points than we've been before. There's really three main ways that vendors could, at this time with where the RFP stands, we're drafting it right now, really three different ways that vendors could come after this. The one way, first way, would be for an off-the-shelf product. They have something they've already have in development, they would bring it forward and say, "This serves your needs in this way." The second way would be to take the work that we've been doing for years on NESA, right, for teacher-generated items that we own, that we control, and use those items in some way moving forward with a new type of an assessment. It might be something that's similar but new, and from what we've done in the past. But they'd take what we already have and do something new with it as we move forward. And the third way is really an off-the-shelf product, and then taking those Nebraska items and doing what we call a wraparound assessment for that, and creating this sort of hybrid specialty piece for Nebraska specifically. So those are three ways that we think vendors might come at, doing proposals for this RFP. And so really, the off-the-shelf in conjunction with the Nebraska items that we already have in our bank, and that we may, we could continue to make going forward if that was where we went, decided we wanted to go. Some key requests that we're asking of vendors in this RFP so far: robust technology support and a platform for the administration of the assessment. We want to make sure whoever bids on that and would eventually get that has good technology, and that we don't have to worry about that because, as we know, that can be a problem if it's not a good technology that works all over the state for us. Timeliness. We want the vendors to keep in mind as they're doing proposals that class instruction time is important, and we don't want to take too much of that as we're doing these assessments. We want to keep those to the minimum, but also give us good information back. And as far as the timeliness of that information coming back to us, we want to make sure that whatever information and data that is derived from those assessments comes back to students, to parents, and to schools in a timely manner that they can use that information as they go forward. Vendors could propose tests that have, that are or have adaptive elements to it. We think that's important, that if vendors have that capability and they see a way forward, that that would be a powerful component to these assessments. These vendors could propose tests, or the tests have a purposeful measure of growth, that there is a way that these tests are purposely designed to have a growth element included in them. That is important. Also includes professional development support for assessment literacy. So we're looking for a vendor that can help us continue to increase the knowledge of our educators from around the state about assessments and how we use the results of those assessments as we move, continue to move forward. We're looking for assistance with communication, that the company or vendor is able to provide good media to put information out to our stakeholders, whether they're parents, or schools, or whoever it is, that they can help us develop some of that communication pieces. And then also, of course, that we want the requirements to meet ESSA, so that we meet those statutory obligations that we have to have. So those are some of the big pieces that we know are in the RFP right now. One other piece that I'll talk about is the RFI. We currently have a request for information out. That will be coming back, and the information from that RFI will continue to inform the RFP as we continue to draft that and get that ready for release later this month.
Anyone have any questions for Jeremy? Molly?
I'm calling out with a little bit, are you talking about the question for proposal for statewide assessments, do you agree to replace the current DRC-driven?
I thought it was. It's going to be to replace that. One thing I was going to say is, over the last eight years on a local board and six years on the state, I know that our teachers just hold their breath and they want some pattern of stability and some sustainability and retain what's good and make modifications, but not just keep throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So pardon me for being outside looking in, but I hope whatever we're doing, we retain what has been strong and good and constructive, and recognize that, all the investment of our teachers. And then also, when I was at that Eissue 13 meeting, your name was, came out as like a treasure because you answered questions. So Jeremy will always, and they said they love that check for learning as an instructional, formative way to lead to a summative growth of student achievement. So bless the assessment team that's working on this, thank you. And I just wanted to put a pitch in, and has DRC been invited to submit an RFP?
They'll definitely be able to submit a proposal, yes.
I know that there's been some harsh remarks on some of, obviously, we've had some problems with the written assessments. But I think we would be remiss if we don't recognize that they have really done a lot to advance student assessment in Nebraska. Thank you.
Rachel?
Maureen, I'd also like, I don't know, Commissioner, if you want to respond to this. As we talk about, Jeremy, as you talked about the timeliness, I think it's important to put in context a part of the change also is amount of assessment that's being required. And right now, there's a national requirement and a state requirement that I think that may be looked at in a different context moving forward. Commissioner, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, I can address that. First of all, as Rachel points out, the notion of, we do have a requirement for a national assessment instrument, we have a separate requirement for a state assessment, as rules and regs come from the federal level relative to what types of opportunities are there to really start to rethink key elements of that. Because it's in state law that we have a national assessment instrument for grades three through eight, when we were anticipating the change to ACT, for instance, we actually tried to make it possible to remove a duplication of an extra national assessment when we're moving to ACT. I would actually suggest that at least as it's possible, as we go through this process, that we could actually align that. It would take legislative change yet, but I think that would be something that would be received favorably because it could reduce the overall amount of time that we do in assessment. I think the other part that I kind of want to highlight a little bit is how we think about doing assessment and gathering that information is important, and the importance of like what we've done in check for learning and what we've historically done in Nebraska around interim assessment, and making that assessment most meaningful to individual students, as well as at a classroom level, is part of this process, too, that we are thinking about, and I think Jeremy put it really well, the technology has changed to make this much more meaningful for us in the future, and much more timely for instructional use. And as we look at all of our data systems and how we're doing accountability for the future, you can see we've tried to move away from a focus purely on assessment, right? I think it's been important for us within AQuest. But we also want to do assessment most efficiently and effectively for classroom use, for district use, for our own state use, and we see that coming together. So it doesn't necessarily make sense that we have laws that would take us in two different directions and create some unnecessary duplication. And so we want to continue to pursue that, possibly, maybe something that would go back in the legislative conversation, at least some flexibility in our state law to make sure that the flexibility in the federal law is reflected in the state possibilities as well. And doing that well and providing leadership in that arena is going to be critical for us in this process.
John?
Thank you, Maureen. Jeremy, quick question. You stated that you want a test that has a purposeful factor for growth. When you say growth, you talk about capacity, capabilities?
Sorry, I probably should have said the measurement of growth. So as we look at it, originally, the NESA test did not, were not designed to measure growth. That was something that was really brought in and brought to the forefront in later iterations, and our current accountability system and ESSA requires growth to be a part of that. And so if we're designing new tests, then we do that in a purposeful way, and that we have vertical articulation so that you can see growth from one year to the next. And so I probably should have said the measurement of growth in there is what we're looking for, that's designed into the test from the beginning instead of being an afterthought.
Well, just brings up another question in regards to capabilities. Does it increase? Do we have a capability for increase of physical functions?
There's ways definitely to do that. I mean, one way is adaptive tests typically have a better growth model, and you can also do vertically-aligned tests. One of the things that, you know, we'll always have to balance, because oftentimes, a vertically-aligned test has to have, so if you're a fourth grader taking a vertically-aligned test, you'll often have third-grade items in it and fifth-grade items in it, so that you can put all of those on a scale. And that's, the adaptive test does that in a natural sort of way. And so there are ways to do that in a very purposeful manner, but oftentimes, it does make the test somewhat longer in some cases, or it can. So yet, we'll always have things that we have to balance and tensions that we have to do, and so that'll be, you know, as these bits come in, we'll have to balance all of those things, I guess.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jeremy. One further thing the committee reviewed was the committee transition plan in preparation for the new committee members, starting in January, February. And committee members, Glenn, Lilly, Rachel, anything I've missed? Okay. Back to you, president-wise.
Thank you, Chair Nichols. Okay. And my job now is to take a break. Like this new part of the job. So if we can take 10 minutes and be back about 25 to 4, that would be great. So let's take about a 10-minute break. Thanks.
We'll reconvene from break, and we will move on to item two, student success and access domain. I will turn it over to Molly Hollerin. Molly?
I'd like to thank Pat Timm and Pat McPherson and John Whitzel for contributing to our discussion, and Catherine Williamson, who was taking notes today. As you can see on your agenda, there are two action items. The first is grant the commissioner authority to contract with the State Office of the Chief Information Officer for services connected to nutrition services, direct certification grant from December 12, 2016 through March 1, 2018. Diane is here, and if you have questions, you may ask her, but I will just summarize it briefly. This will save time for districts, especially in verification. It will also integrate with the community eligibility provisions in those urban areas that are already using the CEP. Is there any question on the first action item? I'll move to the second one. Grant the commissioner authority to approve a contract to the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska Extension for a period from December 12, 2016 to November 30, 2017. Zainab, Rita's right here, too. You may ask her questions, but I'll summarize it briefly. This includes whole environment, nutrition, physical education, and also family outreach for wellness. And there'll be multiple trainings for local education associations, along with evaluation of the process and the outcomes. And I really want to thank Zainab for really drawing people together to realize well, children are much more apt to be successful in school. Any questions on action item 2.2? Okay, now moving to discussion items. We are going to use the word personal learning plans. It's already in, I guess, on so many documents. Donna Hoffman is awesome. If you ever have a chance to visit with her, she works with the Career Tech Education. She had a little PowerPoint, Commissioner. Is it possible that we could have that shared with board members in your own time? You may wish to look at it. And then part of career development is three-sided, self-awareness, career exploration, and career planning process. And we're talking about this starting in 7th grade, because that's really where it begins. Nebraska Career Connections website is hosted by a company called Kuder, K-U-D-E-R. And I want to congratulate Nebraska Department of Ed. We're doing joint funding with VR, Labor, NDE, and some other entities. And what's going to happen, pardon me, is our students are going to have a personal portfolio, and they can have all their forms in one digital place, and they can access them even if the school district doesn't support this Nebraska Career Connections. And there are also portals for your parents, so parents can go in and see how they can support their students' career exploration, education planning, job planning. Also, NDE is in discussion with economic development, labor, and we'll continue to see if we can pool our resources to make this more efficient, effective, and accessible to students, no matter where they live. And mobility was an issue we talked about, too, the homeless and the foster children. And then the second discussion item is data to support personal learning plans. Dean Folkers is not here, but he was at our committee meeting, and he's amazing. If you ever have time, thank Dean for getting his team and Brent Gaswick together to make this data. Pat, do you remember when we were on so many years ago, and we had this repository of data, and no one could really access it except for the financial report, or the fiscal report, or the end of the year? And now Dean and his team, and Matt, your kind of direction, too, this data is usable. And just briefly, we talked about the vision for the personalized learning plan, and Dean Folkers even talked about having an app on the phone where the student can access their student learning plan and see, okay, these are my aptitudes, my assets, these are job demands, and my career pathways, and even have, like, letters of recommendation on the phone when they apply for jobs and things. So that was kind of cool. And then also, Pat McPherson brought up a good point that should be related to the EBA's and our AQuest. So, and we all agreed with that, that it really should support incentivizing school districts to promote these personal learning plans. And we do, as a committee, also know we're trying to retain jobs in companies within our state. We talked about Quinagre leaving and Cabela's, you know, the change of hands. Okay, almost done. Discussion item 3.3. We talked about the draft goals for strategic vision and direction. Again, we're going to say personal learning plan. We redefine the definition of subgroup. And then this is something I did want you to think about before our next meeting. We had a long discussion about the cohort, and whether we should just engage districts for four-year graduates, or does it matter if they graduate kids in seventh years? And our team, our domain said, you know, we want to give them credit for four-year as well as seven-year graduates, but there'll be two separate data streams. And I think the commissioner said he was good with that. And then there was, on goal 4.3, we wanted to make sure that this accessibility isn't just to districts, but to all students. And then Melody, Melody's not here either, but she did a great job talking about teacher certification for early childhood. And I really believe Nebraska has a robust early childhood planning certification in the works. Transition plans, Jolene Palmer, she is here. Jolene, she does a great job kind of organizing all of us and facilitating discussion. We do want rule 42 clarification. Any school that offers ASR last rules regarding recruiters, no changes to work completed. We're going to continue discussion on the EBA, and that's it. Any questions? Okay, I got it done in four minutes.
Thank you, Molly. Next, we'll go on to John Whitzel and the Commissioner Appraisal Committee.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much to the appraisal committee members, Rachel Wise and Lilly Larson, and the entire board for taking the time to review the process and thorough consensus of the labor agreement arrived at a final version of the commissioner's employment agreement. In a short brief on the process, each board member was provided an appraisal worksheet to be filled in assessing the commissioner on various performance factors. Also, the opportunity to make comments was encouraged. I must say that on the various performance sheets we returned, all scores were literally between exceeds and meet standards, with more leaning toward the exceeds. I compiled all the worksheets and provided them to all the board members for their review and their comments. With that, board discussion ensued, with unanimous decision was made on the following content of the commissioner's amendment number two to the employment agreement. These are the changes from amendment one. The term of the agreement shall commence the first year of 2017 and shall terminate on 30 June 2019, which we defined as a term. It was decided a two-and-a-half-year term would be beneficial to all parties. Please note the change from the previous January date to June was based off budget considerations within the state. The commissioner's salary would be $227,000 and $236,000. Including the salary is a 2.95 raise based on estimates on increase to all Nebraska employees. Please note the estimated increase is 2.5. The 2.95 was determined to be a fair increase due to the term being one-and-a-half years. The commissioner's salary last year was $227,250. Annual report to the state board, beginning with the 2017 term year, the commissioner shall provide each board member, no later than December 15 of each year in term, a written report setting forth in details of his performance with respect to the duties as the commissioner. Annual evaluation of the performance. On or about June 15, 2018, and each June 15 of the term thereafter, the state board shall communicate to the commissioner its evaluation of his performance under the agreement. In the future, the performance appraisal process shall include reports and indicators which correlate with the strategic plan. Also, each board member had a chance this afternoon to review the labor agreement, and all came back and approved. Do I have any questions?
I'd just like to make a point. And last year, we took out a car allowance. This contract has nothing hidden in it. It's very transparent, and I think that's important when we see some of the things we've seen over the last many years with boards of education and other organizations discovering upon a termination or a resignation that, oh, my gosh, we've got this in it. And, you know, I compliment John and I compliment the commissioner for the fact that, you know, I think we have a very transparent contract, and I think that's important to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to follow up as well, and as we went through the appraisal process, and certainly the contract amendment, again, to thank the commissioner, and I think we all feel that way, that we greatly appreciate your leadership and the direction that you've taken us over the past year, and the continued workload that you give us as a part of this process. But I think we all feel that, you know, you really have helped us move the system of education forward in Nebraska, and we greatly appreciate that.
Lilly?
Appreciate serving on the committee, and it is a very thorough process, and one is clearly, everybody in the board has representation in the decision. And probably one of the biggest major changes is the change in schedule that we have set that we match with the budget year. We also felt that, and with the commissioner's input on this, that being able to give the December 15 report, you could give a more complete report, because you would have the information from the previous year to incorporate. So overall, these are excellent changes, and one that I think that will make the board stronger than ever, so along with the commissioner.
Thank you, Lilly. Anybody else? Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much to the appraisal committee members, Rachel Wise and Lilly Larson, and the entire board for taking the time to review the process and thorough consensus of the labor agreement arrived at a final version of the commissioner's employment agreement. In a short brief on the process, each board member was provided an appraisal worksheet to be filled in assessing the commissioner on various performance factors. Also, the opportunity to make comments was encouraged. I must say that on the various performance sheets we returned, all scores were literally between exceeds and meet standards, with more leaning toward the exceeds. I compiled all the worksheets and provided them to all the board members for their review and their comments. With that, board discussion ensued, with unanimous decision was made on the following content of the commissioner's amendment number two to the employment agreement. These are the changes from amendment one. The term of the agreement shall commence the first year of 2017 and shall terminate on 30 June 2019, which we defined as a term. It was decided a two-and-a-half-year term would be beneficial to all parties. Please note the change from the previous January date to June was based off budget considerations within the state. The commissioner's salary would be $227,000 and $236,000. Including the salary, is a 2.95 raise based on estimates on increase to all Nebraska employees. Please note the estimated increase is 2.5. The 2.95 was determined to be a fair increase due to the term being one-and-a-half years. The commissioner's salary last year was $227,250. Annual report to the state board, beginning with the 2017 term year, the commissioner shall provide each board member, no later than December 15 of each year in term, a written report setting forth in details of his performance with respect to the duties as the commissioner. Annual evaluation of the performance. On or about June 15, 2018, and each June 15 of the term thereafter, the state board shall communicate to the commissioner its evaluation of his performance under the agreement. In the future, the performance appraisal process shall include reports and indicators which correlate with the strategic plan. Also, each board member had a chance this afternoon to review the labor agreement, and all came back and approved. Do I have any questions?
I'd just like to make a point. And last year, we took out a car allowance. This contract has nothing hidden in it. It's very transparent, and I think that's important when we see some of the things we've seen over the last many years with boards of education and other organizations discovering upon a termination or a resignation that, oh, my gosh, we've got this in it. And, you know, I compliment John and I compliment the commissioner for the fact that, you know, I think we have a very transparent contract, and I think that's important to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to follow up as well, and as we went through the appraisal process, and certainly the contract amendment, again, to thank the commissioner, and I think we all feel that way, that we greatly appreciate your leadership and the direction that you've taken us over the past year, and the continued workload that you give us as a part of this process. But I think we all feel that, you know, you really have helped us move the system of education forward in Nebraska, and we greatly appreciate that.
Lilly?
Appreciate serving on the committee, and it is a very thorough process, and one is clearly, everybody in the board has representation in the decision. And probably one of the biggest major changes is the change in schedule that we have set that we match with the budget year. We also felt that, and with the commissioner's input on this, that being able to give the December 15 report, you could give a more complete report, because you would have the information from the previous year to incorporate. So overall, these are excellent changes, and one that I think that will make the board stronger than ever, so along with the commissioner.
Thank you, Lilly. Anybody else? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your leadership on the committee as well. Oh.
No. Rebuttal time. No, first of all, thank you for your confidence in me, number one. I appreciate that, and thank you for your dedication and work as board members, you know, taking this position on.
But she did a great job talking about teacher certification for early childhood. And I really believe Nebraska has a robust early childhood planning certification in the works. Transition plans, Jolene Palmer, she is here. Jolene, she does a great job kind of organizing all of us and facilitating discussion. We do want rule 42 clarification. Any school that offers ASR last rules regarding recruiters, no changes to work completed. We're going to continue discussion on the EBA. And that's it. Any questions? Okay, I got it done in four minutes.
Thank you, Molly. Next, we'll go on to John Whitwell and the Commissioner Appraisal Committee.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much to the appraisal committee members, Rachel Wise and Lily Larson and the entire board for taking the time to review the process and thorough consensus of the labor agreement arrived at a final version of the commissioner's employment agreement. In a short brief on the process, each board member was provided an appraisal worksheet to be filled in assessing the commissioner on various performance factors. Also, the opportunity to make comments was encouraged. I must say that on the various performance sheets we returned, all scores were literally between exceeds and meet standards, with more leaning toward the exceeds. I compiled all the worksheets and provided them to all the board members for their review and their comments. With that, board discussion ensued with unanimous decision was made on the following content of the commissioner's amendment number two to the employment agreement. These are the changes from amendment one. The term of the agreement shall commence the first year of 2017 and shall terminate on 30 June 2019, which we defined as a term. It was decided a two-and-a-half-year term would be beneficial to all parties. Please note the change from the previous January date to June was based off budget considerations within the state. The commissioner's salary would be $227,000 and $236,000. Including the salary is a 2.95 raise based on estimates on increase to all Nebraska employees. Please note, the estimated increase is 2.5. The 2.95 was determined to be a fair increase due to the term being one-and-a-half years. The commissioner's salary last year was $220,725. Annual report to the state board beginning with the 2017 term year, the commissioner shall provide each board member, no later than December 15 of each year in term, a written report setting forth in details of his performance with respect to the duties as the commissioner. Annual evaluation of the performance. On or about June 15, 2018, and each June 15 of the term thereafter, the state board shall communicate to the commissioner its evaluation of his performance under the agreement. In the future, the performance appraisal process shall include reports and indicators which correlate with the strategic plan. Also, each board member had a chance this afternoon to review the labor agreement and all came back and approved. Do I have any questions?
I'd just like to make a point. And last year, we took out a car allowance. This contract has nothing hidden in it. It's very transparent. And I think that's important when we see some of the things we've seen over the last many years with boards of education and other organizations discovering upon a termination or a resignation that, oh, my gosh, we've got this in it. And, you know, I compliment John and I compliment the commissioner for the fact that, you know, I think we have a very transparent contract and I think that's important to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to follow up as well. And as we went through the appraisal process and certainly the contract amendment, again, to thank the commissioner, and I think we all feel that way, that we greatly appreciate your leadership and the direction that you've taken us over the past year and the continued workload that you give us as a part of this process. But I think we all feel that, you know, you really have helped us move the system of education forward in Nebraska, and we greatly appreciate that.
Appreciate serving on the committee, and it is a very thorough process and one is clearly, everybody in the board has representation in the decision. And probably, one of the biggest major changes is the change in schedule that we have set that we match with the budget year. We also felt that, and with the commissioner's input on this, that being able to give the December 15 report, you could give a more complete report because you would have the information from the previous year to incorporate. So, overall, these are excellent changes and one that I think that will make the board stronger than ever. So, along with commissioner.
Thank you, Lily. Anybody else? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your leadership on the committee as well. Oh.
No. Rebuttal time. No, first of all, thank you for your confidence in me, number one. I appreciate that. And thank you for your dedication and work as board members, you know, taking this position on is a unique challenge in its own sense. But I'm very proud to be the commissioner of education in Nebraska. I think you should be proud of your work that you've accomplished. I will tell you, and I appreciate kind of the transition of the timeframe to be appropriate with the state budget cycle and other considerations of budget cycle, including what salaries are able to be put in place for state, for other state employees. And I will tell you, I will not take an increase beyond what our other state employees were able to gather. And I know that at that point in time, we didn't necessarily know what that number would be. But I just want you to know that, and I appreciate always your confidence in me, but I also believe it's appropriate that I not take an increase of other state employees, or it should be commensurate with what other state employees are receiving, and I think that's most appropriate. I'm very proud of my staff and the work that they do on a daily basis. And so, your confidence in me is also your confidence in my staff, and I very much appreciate that as well.
Okay, now, I won't ignore you. Anyone else's comments, I'll look on both sides. Moving on to item four is our policy committee, and I'll turn it over to Pat Tim.
The policy committee has five action items on the agenda tomorrow. The first one is to ask for your approval on revisions to be five board committees. We talked about this, I think, last month a little bit too. We're recommending that a new standing committee be added, and that standing committee would be Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee. And there is a description, as we have for our other committees. Excuse me. The second one is the approval of revisions to D6, contracts, grants, and purchases. We ask the Finance and Budget Committee to look this over, and they have a recommendation, to increase the amount of, from $25,000 to more than $50,000 or more on any contract purchase or submission receipt or distribution of a competitive grant hearing before appearing before the state board for review. I think that's going to expedite the process instead of having to bring those things back. And we all know that things are costing more than they did years ago. The third one is to ask for your approval tomorrow, revisions to D7. This is professional personnel hiring. This was changed due to changes in the 2016 legislature. And we're all adus is putting in the new statute language. D13, we're asking for approval on revisions. This is concerning the audits of the Department of Education. The policy committee agrees with the Finance and Budget Committee's recommendation to add language about NDE audits, and those will be reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee, and then we'll report their recommendations to the board. So, some things have been, that have been in policy. There's a couple of those things that are now going to be under the umbrella of the Finance Committee. We also looked at next year's proposed state board meeting dates, and it's in draft right now, and you should have a copy of that. We will meet, our first meeting next year will be on the 5th and 6th of January. There will be no committee meetings because we will be in reorganization, and we don't have the time set for that yet. We need to wait and see when the legislature is going to do the swearing ins and those sorts of things. The November dates have been changed from the first Thursday and Friday to the 2nd, which would be November 8th and 9th. And this is to accommodate the NASB conference dates. And we do have people that will attend the NASB conference, and so, we didn't want to conflict with that. And then, we had some discussion about July. We have generally not had a meeting in July, and we probably will continue that. But due to, again, transitions that are going to be happening, we wanted to put a placeholder in so that people had an idea. So, and we want to stay away from the 4th of July holiday because we know people take extended time then. So, we're going to propose that it is listed that the 13th and 14th of July in 2017 may be a meeting if needed. But that doesn't mean it's going to happen. And our other, so, does anybody have any questions about the approval for?
I would like to change policy D13 back to still providing the audit to the entire state board of education, but letting the Budget and Finance Committee review that.
Well, we'll say that they will report their recommendations to the board, but you'd like to see the audit.
I mean, it's all electronics, so we're not chopping down any trees to do that. And somebody might see something in there that the Budget and Finance Committee didn't consider, or might raise a question that they would want to. Do I have to make a motion to amend it?
Well, we don't make motions today.
Tomorrow's motion, but I think we just have to look at that.
It may not be a substantive.
Or whether it's just more of the practice of how we make sure that the information is disseminated, because I don't think the intent is to keep.
The intent is not to keep it from. The intent is two steps. One, having the committee, and then, two, the full board. So, I, we can look at that.
Sure, we'll look at the wording.
So, if we just strike the first change, I think that gets to what I was driving at.
Okay. We'll make sure that the wording is a little clearer.
Then, I'm back on D6. I was wondering what happens now? We have to vote on those? Are they in the consent agenda? Do they come up?
It depends upon whether or not it's a new grant, or how much it exceeds $50,000, or whether people, I mean, board members can ask to have it on the regular agenda. Sometimes, some of our contracts are contracts that we have year after year. They're kind of a routine thing, and they may be over $50,000. But sometimes, those do appear on the consent agenda because we've been doing them for several years and that sort of thing. But generally, if it's a new contract, it does come before the board the first time, no matter what the cost.
I was just thinking back to the grant to the Grove Foundation, which was controversial, and I don't know if that would have been covered by this policy or not. But sometimes, if it's in the, in just a report at the end, people would tend to overlook that or miss that, and then later on, they find out.
Yeah, sure.
There's a problem that they wish they would have known about sooner. So, I'm not unhappy with the way things are now, but of course.
Right. Well, and when I first came on the board, we had to approve everything over $10,000. And then, several years ago, we moved it to 25. And then, it was the recommendation of the Finance Committee that we move it up to 50. Rachel?
Yes, and I think the Finance Committee, we discussed this, and we recommend it as a Finance Committee to accept that and move that forward. And that was based on discussion as well as what the more common practices are today, and trying to stay in alignment with what the more common practices are today. And whether it be this change, or even back to our other discussion on D13, just because a committee is doing certain kinds of things also, does not preclude the full board from getting information when needed or having that information available as a part of that process. So, I think that as we're moving forward, we just need to keep in context of a policy change that may be about a procedure that a committee's looked at that is in alignment with best practices and other, you know, similar situations, or where we've added in a step, like in this case, we've really layered a step of accountability in all of our processes by having the Budget and Finance Committee. So, prior to the Budget and Finance Committee, we actually, I think, probably missed a step sometimes in looking in depth and thinking through some of our processes, whether it be the audits or grants, or even budget development. So, I think these changes in policy are aligning to help reinforce our fiduciary responsibilities as a board, as one of my colleagues would say.
Right.
Can I speak? Yes. I'm comfortable with this, and we do have in here that the commissioner will furnish the board with a list of those competitive contracts and grants between $10,000 and $50,000 approved the preceding month. And I would also say that I have a good degree of confidence that if there's a grant that is of a controversial nature, regardless of the amount, that our commissioner would have the wisdom to bring it to the board, or bring it to the Finance Committee. So.
Certainly. Okay.
Pat?
Yes.
To go along with the discussion on this side, I'd like to bring up that we do have a grant tracking process now created by Bryce Wilson and his team, which literally is a very good internal control, where we'll monitor all contracts coming through. And they have a, literally like a checklist that they'll go through with each contract to ensure, as one important point, to ensure the validity of that contract is going to what it's used for.
Good, good.
So, we're very, very happy with Bryce and Shane for that.
In fact, you know, if some other divisions of the state government had the same kind of a tracking system, I'm sure that we would be facing less discussion about returning federal dollars to the federal government for inability to perform. And I have to say, you know, I'm pretty critical of finance issues, but I have to say, I'm very impressed with what we have as far as our efforts and ability to monitor grants. So, I learned a lot today, but we're really doing a good job in that area, I think.
We have always had a very good finance department and people who ran that department. So, I, since I've been here, I've also been very pleased. The only other discussion, after a review of state board policies, B7, which is reimbursement for expenses, and D11, which are the trust funds that we have turned over to the Finance Committee, and those trust funds are the, for the trusts that are, has been set aside for the Nebraska, for the blind and visually impaired. I got Sally back here, and she's going to make fun of me. But we've turned, we, the Policy Committee always approved that budget, and now, we're having the Finance Committee do it. So, there is no need for any action on those policies at this time, so we're finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I am going to move an item up on the agenda and move to item seven, Budget and Finance Committee. I would have moved that up earlier. We've got a little bit of a presentation today, and I forgot that. So, I will move now over to John to the Budget and Finance Committee report. So, John?
Thank you very much, Rachel. We have three action items we'd like to address today that we'd like to brief the board on. Action item 47A is grant the commissioner the authority to approve a contract with the Nebraska Association of Service Providers to increase the capacity of local and regional community-based service providers to effectively identify, access, and serve individuals who have experienced traumatic brain injury. Can we have Mark come down and give us a briefing?
For the record, my name's Mark Schultz, Deputy Commissioner, Director of VR. This is, we issued an RFP on this, and it's really to address an issue of services for individuals with traumatic brain injury. And a lot of them don't qualify for traditional programs. And when they do, they often don't receive the services they really need because they, there's a difficult time identifying them as having a brain injury. And so, we are trying to work with providers in existing service systems. So, we're working with something that's already there and existing, not creating something new, to help expand their skills and their capacity to better serve individuals with those traumatic brain injuries. So, we will be, we contracted, or will contract with the Nebraska Association of Service Providers to bring in support, to provide training to those providers, to develop skills, to provide assessments, to identify individuals who might have a brain injury, and then to learn about appropriate strategies and interventions to better serve that population.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Moving on to action item 47B, action item approve 2017 trust fund budget for the Nebraska Center of Education of children who are blind or visually impaired. Greg and Sally, thank you. Just for the record, Steve Milliken, Director of Special Education. And you have all met Sally, and she'll talk us through the information today.
All right. Just a little bit of background. Like Pat said, in the past, we have worked with the Policy Committee on these each year, and this year, switched to the Finance Committee. But a little bit of background, we talked in our meeting about the school. The school has been in Nebraska City since 1875. So, beans, I think we're up against the holiday party here. I won't start at 1875, but I'll fast forward. But historically, it has been the School for the Blind in Nebraska. And in the late 1990s, big jump ahead, the late 90s, the Department of Education asked for a study on vision services to improve services statewide. And so, a group of stakeholders came together at that time and developed what we called the New State Plan. And I was involved at that point, and I have to remember, it's not new anymore. It's been 18 years. Flew by. But at that point, we really changed the focus at the school, what historically was an accredited school for the blind. That offering of educating kids on campus is obviously still a piece of that picture, but we also broadened the scope much more and served kids statewide. And so, we travel statewide, serve students out in their districts, provide a lot more training for teachers. We're the home for all the teachers of the visually impaired in the state for professional development. We don't, they, a lot of times, they're the only one at their service unit or their district. And so, we pull them together on an annual basis to provide training. And so, outreach services that go out, teachers come in to be trained. We also do a statewide registry and work with American Printing House for the Blind, where we serve over 800 students in the state. So, a lot of other additional enrichment programs for parents with parent training, student programs. Many of you have heard us talk about a lot of the different student programs we offer for the students across the state, and competitions and things like that. So, some of those funds tie into that. Also, in 1999, the Department of Education, the state board approved to go into contract with ESU4 to operate and manage the program. So, that was a huge difference in service delivery. That was when I came on board. It makes ESU4 very different from other service units by providing a statewide program within a unit. And also, we are the only school for the blind in the country who operates under a cooperative similar to that. And I was really young and green and wasn't sure how that would work, and it has worked beautifully. School districts obviously already know how to work with their service units, especially in the area of special education. So, it was a very, very much a natural fit. So, we have been doing that since 1999 and really focusing on that state plan and all the different things that we provide within that. And the budget and the contract goes through ESU4. However, the trust funds are separate. And as a reminder, those are funds that have been given to the Department of Education in memory of, or with the purpose of, to be spent at either the School for the Blind or programs that we operate. So, annually, we come up and present a budget of those type of activities. Some of those trust funds are restricted specifically for student needs, and some of them are unrestricted. And we shared with the committee that some of those funds have been in place for a long, long time. I think Mr. Williams and the Williams Trust Fund, that's been around since 1950. A few of those have come since I have been here the last 18 years. But, so, each one of those are designated for certain expenditures, and we develop the budget accordingly each year, and then come back and provide the expense report and then the budget for the next year, which is what we did today. That's 18 years of my life rolled in. Wow.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
I appreciate the update and support, you know, obviously, the budget you request. But I want to get myself in trouble here. You know, we're talking about endowment funds, and the University of Nebraska has an endowment fund of over a billion dollars. And I just wonder if it isn't come to the point where maybe there ought to be an endowment fund for public schools across Nebraska. And I just, I put that thought forward for some consideration by the powers that be because, you know, I know schools are going to face a lot of problems this year. Every time there's a budget. Every time there's a budget crisis, there's a lot of opportunity out there. There are a lot of potential donors out there that I believe would be very willing to, to donate money to a statewide education endowment fund. So with that said, I'll reengage my brain rather than my, my, my speaker here, Rachel, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other, any other points, concerns, questions? Thank you, Sally. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Action item four seven C, action item readopt NDE Rule eight, school finance budgeting, state funding of educational service units and learning communities with revisions to proposed new section zero zero eight dot zero three regarding community achievement plans. Bryce?
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Bryce Wilson, Director of Finance for the Department of Education. Basically what this is, is it's a non-substantive change. It's a result of Rule eight going to the, blanking out, the what's that? Attorney General. There we go. Their, their review had raised some concerns that we needed to include basically a paragraph at the beginning of that section that tied or had a connection between board approval of the community achievement plans and the funding for the learning community that's associated with that. Basically, there's some funds for community achievement plans that flow through TOSA in an adjustment in an aid format. So we added a paragraph for that. They also wanted to see something addressing if, if the board would not approve the plan, which it's required to review, either approve or not approve. And if they do not approve it, provide some kind of appeal process. So that, a paragraph is added to the rule for that purpose as well. So basically what we had done is we, we had taken statute and discussions with the superintendents in the learning community. They had desired to keep the rule fairly in line with what the statute had said and not add a bunch more requirements. That's kinda what we did. But these couple of things need to be added to it, so.
Thank you, Bryce. Scott, did you have anything to add?
Sorry, the delay.
No problem.
No, other than, and I mentioned this, Scott Summers, the General Counsel at the Department. I, I mentioned this earlier in our, in our meeting. There's nothing added to the new readoption proposed Rule eight that has to do with the decision criteria of the board or April Phillips or anything like that in regard to these plans. This is purely, as Bryce said, a sentence to tie it together for the general public, like what does this have to do with state aid and finance since it's in that rule? And then a closing piece that's more procedural about what a learning community coordinating council can do to seek remedy if their plan is denied even upon reassessment in that second step, so.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? Thank you very much. Bryce, if you'd stay up there for a sec, please, sir. Well, we also went through a few discussion items, one being we got an update from bargaining, on bargaining from Joel this morning. And the impression I got, Bryce, was it's undetermined if there's gonna be any increase in Nebraska, if you will, wages for current employees. Is that the way you read it?
We, we do not have that, we do not know at this time.
We do not know.
What, where that will settle out.
Okay. And that was basically the gist of the bargaining agreement.
What the, what was decided was essentially that the committee, or that the committee wanted to support being in line with where the state settled as far as the Department of Education, so.
Exactly. And also we wanted, I'm sorry.
Could I add just a little clarification? So the, the Department of Education itself bargains on its own and we have a separate agreement than the rest of the state. It has been pretty much the, the tradition for a couple of different reasons. One reason that the legislature appropriates funds to us. So if we're off, off track with the rest of the state government, it's possible we wouldn't have funds appropriated. And obviously, everyone's watching the, the kinda downturn in revenues for the state. So we have to watch carefully what the, the state bargaining is and we continue to work with our bargaining team to, to accomplish that and we'll keep you posted aboard. But I appreciated the committee saying, hey, it makes sense to try to align with where we're at as, as a whole state and I appreciated that guidance.
Yes, sir. Any other points? Also, I'd like to thank Bryce for submitting and showing to us, the committee, the grant tracking process that his department uses in regards to, if you will, reviewing, monitoring contracts that come through NDE. So thanks, Bryce. Thanks to you and your staff.
No problem.
Any other question? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, John. Thanks, Bryce. Next, we'll move to the legislative, back to the legislative committee report. Lilly?
Thank you. I may give you a concise report, but first of all, I want to thank Ryan Hallston and Scott Summers for their guidance and serving as counsel to us in the decisions and discussions we have. We had five different areas of things we discussed. The first one being the committee reviewed a draft of suggested changes to state board policy B seventeen on appointment of hearing officers that included new language for the commissioner. This is the important part. New language for the commissioner to appoint hearing officials on enrollment options appealed by parents. So as to be more expedient in rendering decisions in those matters by the board. If you recall, Glenn has kindly made this suggestion. It presented several situations where it put family in a real difficult situation because of the delay of a decision about where their child could go to school. As a result of the discussion at last month and this month's meeting, the consensus of the committee was to recommend these proposed changes to the state board policy committee for further consideration and to do what they think is appropriate. They'll return that suggestion to the full board. Second item, the committee also asked NDE staff to review with the Attorney General's Office any possible changes to Rule sixty-one for all contested cases and appointment of hearing officers by the commissioner. In other words, other contested cases, maybe they deserve to be moved up faster. So it's to the benefit of everyone. We assume this is always done, that it's moved as fast as possible. But by saying and putting this in place and recommending it, it maybe says it's important to the board. Third item, the committee discussed holding a reception for senators at 5:00 PM, Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. That is the same day of the state board legislative retreat. NDE staff will proceed with making arrangements to hold a reception and send invitations to the senators. We discussed the desirability of a breakfast meeting, a lunch meeting, or an evening meeting. And because of travel, of people coming in from across the state in view of other meetings occurring during that day. And last year, it was in the evening. It was a little bit delayed, but it was still successful. So that is what the legislative committee recommends that you do. Fourth item, Molly has a report, a brief report that she can give from NASB's Governmental Affairs Committee.
Keep up the good work. Be leaders.
Lastly, item five. The committee reviewed the transition report. In other words, all the items that we've dealt with during this past year, those were online that you could read. Plus, also, Brian kindly mentioned and stressed that the legislative committee would be very responsive this next year, looking at the bills that will be coming forward. So it will be a busy year and I know that the board will make some very thoughtful decisions regarding the bills. So thank you very much. And committee, thank you so much to Glenn, John, and Molly. Great service.
Thank you, Lilly. Next, we will go to the Strategic Planning Committee. And we're passing hot off the press the current, this probably has three different versions just today. So putting just a date without a timestamp might not be.
Do you have a new one for everybody then?
Yeah, I think there's, I think everyone, so just to share a little bit of what we're gonna do. We will kind of walk through this process. Are we missing one? I think we're missing, this is my old one, I think, isn't it?
I can use my old one.
Yeah, that's my old one. Pat's missing one. Okay, so we will be walking through this and talking about some next steps and, and trying to clarify any questions and do a full group final edit this evening, however long this evening tends to, to take. But I, I wanna start by thanking first all the staff who have worked diligently on this. Don Lynn, who I know we really, certainly, our hearts are with her today and, and, but I need to really thank her for all the work that she has done in pulling together over the past year and leading this process. And then certainly Carol and Atwell and Russ and Matt Hastings, we just have too many Matts, in all of the work they've done to pull pieces together. It may not be perfect, but if we wait for perfect, we will never get a plan done. And so I think that as we walk through this and have some discussion, as Pat Tim always says, it is a living, breathing document and it will require some changes. It will require some modifications. It requires another section that isn't done yet, that actually as a committee, we discussed not having it in the document yet, coming back in January and talking about the glossary. So as we go through this, there'll be a few discussion items that we will look at in the glossary as we build that glossary moving forward. As, after we adopt the plan, we may find some additional terms that need to get into a glossary as we move forward. So we pulled intentionally the glossary out of the document because it's really incomplete at this time. But there will be a glossary as we move forward and that glossary may be one of the first things that changes more often as we provide clarity through that glossary. Commissioner, do you wanna make any statements before we get started and then I'll start walking through?
No, I, I just think quickly, my, my thoughts on the, on the plan overall, it's so important. And I can see in conversations that we've had in committee and just the thoughtfulness of some of the goal conversations that we have and have had, I really appreciate. And I think again, I'll just reiterate the opportunity for us to continue to add to that as we do our work to do, examine the goals and keep working on tracking that progress. Future, future members of the board, current members of the board will have that chance to, to review that and keep this very much a living document. So I thank everyone for their efforts.
All right, so let's get started. The first pages we're gonna go through is, are pages one through six. Because we've all looked at pages one through six multiple times. And I'm not sure if there are any changes or discussions that really have occurred on pages one through six. So I just wanna give an opportunity, if on anything on page one through six, which really is our introductory and background pages, is there anything anyone has seen on pages one through six that we need to go back and readdress? Speak now or move on. Okay, well, that got us page seven already then. So page seven, again, most of you have seen this numerous times again, but page seven is that one-page view of our strategic vision and direction, the mission, guiding principles, priorities, and outcomes. Is there anything on page seven? Okay. Page eight. As we go through the next pages, these are the pages that I know we've had changes even today. And so these might be the pages that we need to look at any clarification. And these are the pages that maybe some of the goals we're seeing for the first time in their rewritten form. So we'll take a little more time as we go through each of these pages to ensure that these goals, though they may not be perfect, these goals represent where we, we are today. And this first page is on leadership. And on leadership, you know, I don't know, Commissioner, do you wanna just talk to this for a minute?
Yeah, I certainly will. Naturally, the, the other parts of this plan are really built around our conversations on AQuest, our conversations on the important investments that we need to make in the system. We, as the committee really went through that, we realized, hey, look, there's a really important part here around leadership that we ought to consider. And I actually think it's really, this is one of those that could, on a pretty regular basis, be something that we continue to update year by year. But it's actually leadership and the role and responsibility between the board and, and in a lot of ways even with me as the commissioner. But certainly things that the agency would be carrying out at your request. And I think the three goals that are here kinda essentially highlight that. I do kinda reflect back on the, the content of the plan as it existed before. One of those things is how we're moving the agency from to something. And these are three key goals that the committee identified that would help us move down that path. And that's, that's how that ties together and it's, it's interesting to have so many different conversations and then to get down to one or two or three goals. But these are things that I really raised to the surface as important things for us to accomplish in this timeframe.
I'd like your comment.
Yes.
It's called a ten-year plan, but as you notice, at times we say a goal for two thousand eighteen, a goal for two thousand twenty. It's because some things can be achieved much faster and need to be achieved faster. And so it's still part of a ten-year overall plan, but there are some items that have an earlier due date.
All right, so on page eight, any questions or comments relative to the goals on page eight? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna, as I move to page nine, I'm gonna really cause confusion for a minute. I, I'd like you to flip to page ten. I, I took a second and glanced at a, some of the changes. And on page ten, I, I believe there's a note, if you look under three point four, and I think this is a good example of the importance of the glossary. And I think this is important where as opposed to putting a note within, that we clearly define subgroups and use the term subgroups consistently. So what I would like to propose today as we do a final edit, every time you see the word subgroup and then parentheses and some things that are defined behind it, we build on the note on page ten. And in the glossary, we really make sure that that definition of subgroup is robust and meets the needs from all of our perspective. So I would like for us, as we move forward and discuss today and then move towards adoption tomorrow, to adopt subgroup with the understanding that the additional clarity that was provided by the Student Success and Access Team goes into the glossary. And as we move back through this document, wherever we see subgroup, we take basically parentheses out. And the subgroup will be consistently defined throughout this document. So every time we use the term subgroup going forward, it is the agreed-upon glossary term that we will look at again as we move forward. Is that reasonable for everyone? Okay, then I'll go back to page nine. Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna try and understand goal three dot two and goal three, no, sorry, three dot three and three dot four somehow play together. So the four-year cohort, cohort, that is people that have, are all of the same age group and they graduate within four years?
So what I'm gonna do is we're gonna come back to that. I'm really causing confusion. We're going back to page nine.
Okay.
Because I really wanted to clarify the term subgroup because it comes up throughout. So on page nine, for any goal two point one through two point four, in essence, on two point two, we will change and drop the parentheses, but ensure subgroup is written within. So for all Nebraska students and subgroups, will be less than one percent. So I wanna- So I wanted to introduce that concept of not putting the parentheses in, not putting a note every time after within this process. So on page nine, those four goals, any questions, comments, changes?
Briefly, 2.2, thank you so much for having a uniform definition. These obviously we were lacking ethnicity. So I love that idea to remove the parenthetical expression.
And then to the glossary, thank you to your committee for coming up with that. So are we, let's, it sounds like we're good. Let's move on then. And Glenn, if you want to continue with your question on page 10, goals 3.1 through 3.5. And we will remove the note and continue our process with subgroup. But your question was about the cohort groups. So Glenn, let's go back to that.
The seven-year cohort then, or seven-year, that just means people that didn't graduate. They haven't dropped out. They're still.
Plugging away.
Plugging away. And they managed to finish three years after the rest of their bunch. So we're only picking up like 3% there if I understand that.
So I can hit a little bit of the background and I know the committee that talked about it a little bit more. There was, the original conversation was around just having our four-year cohort graduation rate within that. Which is a pretty typical one that we use and I think you described it before. The seven-year actually picks up our responsibility up to age 21. And so part of the messaging, and I think I believe the board or at least some of you as board members heard. At the education conference in November from stakeholders was, hey, look, it's also important to us that we stick with kids. That maybe are in special education or have other challenges to ensure that we hit that graduation rate by then. The other part we talked about, because we could have a fifth year and a sixth year cohort goal as well. And the committee discussion was, why don't we bookend it? And we, and then keep track of, you know, how we're doing on those fronts and use that kind of as a benchmarking. But by having both ends of that goal, it seemed to be the best way to describe it and the most appropriate way to get into the set of goals.
You know, the important part of this to me is we're giving credit to the school districts where credit is due. They have been doing this all along. They, at their local school boards report it. But now it's a way of saying, we recognize the hard work you're doing in keeping these kids in school and getting them through graduation. So thank you, local school districts.
So to pick up just a little bit and then cause more confusion for you, Glenn, maybe on this. Is that if you look at the notes section again in the glossary, what I took away from this. Is we'll make sure that when we define seven-year cohort, we will also be defining that we're gonna report. The five-year, the six-year and the seven-year. But for our goals, we are really focusing on the four-year and the seven-year. But schools, the advantage with the five and six-year, it's still recognized in that seven-year grouping. So the feedback from some schools was the importance of the work that they do to keep kids at fifth year, but get them through. And so that's where I think, I'm guessing that's what you talked about. So again, from a glossary perspective, we need to make sure we define that rather than trying to fit it in the goal and rework the goal. We capture that definition in the glossary. So Glenn, did you have other?
Actually, I was gonna back up to goal 2.4 and just wondered about this absent rule. Are we gonna define that? Because I know there was quite a bit of anxiety about that truancy law. And how are we defining absent?
Do you want to speak to the committee, the council?
Yeah, so we have the council on student attendance and a bit of that tracking. And we had a good conversation, I think, yesterday in committee on this topic as well. That looking at what that definition of absent is and ensuring that our data set is actually appropriate to that. So we will, again, kind of back to the glossary a little bit. That definition of what absent is and what data goes into that is really important. Because we have schools that could report an absence for things that would be an excused absence. Is that what we mean by that? And so coming up with a clear sense of what that means. I will tell you, the current law talks about 20 days and being much more aggressive around 10. I think is a better thing for us to lead with. Because we know that by the time that they've reached 20 days, number one, we're putting, you know, pressure on our court system around truancy. We're doing things like that. I think it would be important that we track at a 10-day level and make a real statement about the importance of attendance in schools. And for that reason, I think that, I mean, I know other committee members could talk to that, but.
I think that's part of, and again, that glossary, how we develop that and provide that background information. Part of the discussion we had at committee level as well as the role of the attendance.
Student attendance, council student.
Council student attendance, is that we know that the impact on student achievement occurs. And we talked about that research has shown that, you know, really, once you start to pass seven days, there could be a correlating impact on student achievement. And so having this as an important piece, if student achievement is guiding us and that we believe is critical. Then it gives work for that council. It gives us a process to say, here's another important piece that we need to think about and address. And again, that probably some statements about why attendance is important relative to student achievement. Maybe need to be something we put in the glossary as well. So as we develop that glossary, I think that glossary will help people understand why some of these elements and goals became important for us. Any other comments?
Just a point of information, you know, I call people's attention to page five and the fact that we're defining very large goals. That, you know, we're gonna have to have an impact on these goals. And it's gonna be up to the department and the commissioner to develop the, to develop the strategies to achieve these goals. And, you know, that's not to say this is easy. But, you know, that's where the impact is gonna be. So, and that's clear across every one of these that you see here is that, you know, we've set the large goal. Now it's gonna be up to the, you know, whether we're dealing with subgroups or whatever we're dealing with. For the commissioner and the department to really, really follow through on this and achieve this. And they're gonna, you know, there's gonna be consequences if they don't. And, you know, we, you know, so that's where we're coming from.
Thanks, Pat. Yes.
Where the annual report will be so valuable, it'll give you some clues as to. Oh, sorry. It'll give you some clues as to things that they have initiated that they didn't do before. That's where the evidence-based response is. So I think you'll see it right away. I think they're going to be aggressive.
All right. Any other questions on page 10 or comments? Yes, John?
I happen to be the transition, if you will, chairperson for transition.
Or guru, yes.
And lived with it for a long time, so I've got a great passion for transition. But I was just surprised to see that I disagree with some of these goals. On the bottom, in regards to mobility and graduation, you bet. That's part of our AQuest. There's no doubt about it. That's functional. But we need to add maybe CTE, CE dropout rates. Those are very, very important and they're measurable. And we don't see them here. I see this by 20, NDE will collaborate with the governor, legislator and so forth to build a dual credit opportunities for students. I mean, we gotta have a way to measure that.
Any, okay.
So in other words, do I have a say in regards to what goals we're gonna place in transition?
Today you do and you need to, and you have had.
Well.
Any changes?
Okay.
I mean, that's where we're at. Today, we're at a point of trying to determine, are we ready to adopt? That doesn't mean we can't add goals as we move forward. That doesn't mean, for example, dropout is listed. It is, and I think I thought somewhere.
Where?
Here, it is goal 2.2 under, on page nine. Some of our goals cross over different tenants.
Okay.
And so it's important that we have to step back, look at all the goals. Think about all the goals and how those goals interconnect to a picture. Some goals have measurable percentages, rates and processes. Some goals are what I would consider a product goal or maybe a process goal about some things that have to change. So we have a variety of different goals. So I guess my question to you is, can you tell me exactly what goal is missing from your perspective? And how would that have been written?
Give me an example, a week ago, there was two goals here on this sheet, a week ago. Goals that I was responsible for. As of this morning, there were three and now there's five.
Correct. And in a committee this, today, you had a chance to talk about that. So I, from your, I'll go to Molly and then come back to Lily.
Can I say one thing being on that committee? It went to those additional numbers, additional ones because of clarification. Whereas some of them were lengthy. And by breaking it out, we thought that it's clear, it's more specific. And the goal of the goal is clear. So it's just that simple. It was not trying to be manipulative or anything like that.
So Molly and then Commissioner.
Okay. As chairman of success, access and support this domain, I wanted to say that I am very supportive of all of these as they are. I think we need to move on. I liked your preliminary comment when you said this is a dynamic document. And we probably will be amending it and revising some of the specific goals. But what I do like about having these as they are today is we're talking about baseline and benchmarks, which is good. And that goal 3.1. And 3.2, I think it's essential, the collaboration with the governor, legislature plus secondary. So it makes total sense. And then point three and point four, dealing with those graduation rates that Glenn raised, why does that matter? And then the last one, the subgroups. Excuse me. 3.4, as we said, 3.5, the highly mobile students include your kids that are in foster care.
Well, we know this, Molly. Molly, we know this.
So these are all good. There's nothing wrong with these.
Maybe not, but the priority of the goals is what I'm concerned about.
But these aren't in, these aren't in order of priority, are they? They are all equally important.
But as I said before, I'd like to add some.
Going forward, yes, going forward, certainly there'll be opportunities to add and revise as we move and go forward. Commissioner, you had a comment?
Well, I mean, I don't know if this muddies the water, so I hopefully not, but I'll try not to. So just looking at goal 3.2, and I know we had this conversation before. Maybe 3.2 actually fits underneath leadership. And the reason that I say that, it actually is much more aligned with the expectation of leadership of our responsibility to do that. Rather than this particular spot on transition. So I give that a little bit of thought and if that seems reasonable. I think the other thing I wanted to point out was, we had quite a conversation about areas in which we don't have data that we can yet track. And I thought it was really important, I mean, the first goal here, 3.1. And because we had a lot more of this conversation in committee than we have as a full board, I thought it'd be worth talking about just a little bit. In the committee, we talked often about where we didn't have a data source that we're yet comfortable setting a goal around. We tried to establish a goal that would establish a baseline. So, and I think it goes to some of John's points about those other areas in which we could. And in the future, be able to come back after we've established a baseline to hit those major points that I think that we would like to see yet expanded on. And so I think our intent on transition, at least on that first one on baseline. Was about getting some of those things done, but feeling more comfortable saying, let's set the baseline first and then move us forward. And so my hope is that that would actually then encapsulate those things that John has as an interest in the goal setting.
So are you recommending 3.2 move to leadership, John?
The commissioners just recommend that. Are you comfortable with that, John, moving that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So let's move goal 3.2 over to become, and you can check the ordering, which actually would work. 1.4, because we've tried to order these by year, a progression of years. So that can move and become a new 1.4. Is that agreeable with everyone? All right. Any other comments, John, on transitions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other comments for anyone else on transitions? If not, let's move on to page 11. And that would be educational opportunities and access. We have three goals. One of those goals is kind of a fairly new goal, the last goal. Any comments, discussion?
I'll throw in one, because, yeah.
Go ahead.
Another area in which I help muddy the water, I guess. Again, this one kind of goes to a definitional piece. And so what we have there, and I think as we talked about it, it becomes very long. But when we say that something is a high-quality early childhood education program, what do we mean by that? I would recommend that we would come up with a definition that would include those things that are within the parentheses. And it wouldn't have to be muddy the waters relative to the goal itself. The other thing that I would say on this one is that it could be measured by EBA right now. This was a conversation we had in committee. That if we asked every elementary school principal, for instance, do you have access, you know, do your students have access to one of these? It's something that becomes measurable. We really struggled with that because figuring out a good way to know whether or not a student has access is a tough thing to define. Without coming up with some random measure. But we thought, because of the toolset that we built with EBA, that this could be addressed in this fashion.
Okay. So I think what I heard is a recommendation, if you look at goal 4.3, that that's in print, which I think makes it much easier to read. Will move to the glossary. So the prints will come out and move to the glossary and the goal then will stay as is. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yes.
All right. Good suggestion. Page, anything else? Pat, anything else on page 11?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. That by having it now in the EBA, where we talk about early childhood programs and how that affects. Still, where we don't have a universal preschool program in Nebraska. But we need to recognize how schools are working in their communities. And by tying this to the EBA, in time, we may have this goal much differently in this document. But right now, we're still recognizing the fact that we have programs that communities can use in their community. But it may not be directly in the school. So I think that's very important.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Pat. All right. Let's move on to page 12. And that's college, career and civic ready. I think the only real change there was probably 5.2. Any comments, Glenn?
I think you answered all my questions.
Yeah, maybe. Okay. So any questions on? We're good? Okay. Assessment. I'm gonna start the premise on page 13 with assessment. That we started out goal 6.1, pretty much saying, there's a lot we don't know. And we do with assessment, as you heard today from the presentation. This actually gives us direction. But I would not be surprised if over the next year, we may rewrite many of these goals. Or even over the next two to three years. We are in such a transition with assessment. It's very, very difficult to be, you know, predicting what our baseline and direction needs to be. But I think this gives us the format. It gives us a starting point for where we are right now. And it will help guide our evolution as assessments change. So in essence, our important goals, other than like subgroups will change to the definition. Our important goals that we're trying to establish here is that we will use baseline data from ACT. And in January, there'll be a presentation that was at the committee today around the ACT and the processes that are underway. As the assessment team is looking at how we'll establish cut scores and reporting options. So we will be establishing a baseline. We will be establishing a new assessment system as we heard today. As we look at goals 6.3, 4.5. Those goals, what they're saying, in my view, is that reading and or English language arts as we transition. Math and science are critical areas that we will measure and monitor. And right now, we put in what we know. What we know is the baseline where we're at, 7, 9.1 in reading. What we know is the baseline where we're at, 7.91 in reading, 7.21 in math, 7.21 in science. We know where we are. We had a statistical projection of where we're going. But I think this is an area that we'll come back to the board probably several times over the next couple of years, requesting revisions of the goals based on changes we make with assessment. Are there questions about these goals?
I just think they're pretty straight.
Commissioner, I just have one question on goals 6, 3, 4, and 5. That is, in 10 years, a percent increase in proficiency each year. Did the psychometricians think that was reasonable? Is that just, how did you choose it?
That's just what I was going to address.
Sorry.
Based on the inform, no, it's a good question, because we wondered what we could set it at.
It's on.
We, at, based on what has occurred, they had a five-year report that showed the average growth had been 1% each year over five years. So that is, yes, that's where we got that measure.
Did you...
And then applied it to this.
Respond.
You asked exactly the question we did in the committee.
Either way, the committee, we had this discussion. The main thing I want to put there is that
It's dynamic.
It is gonna be dynamic, because we're changing the assessment system over the next couple of years as well, in some capacity. All right, any questions on assessment? Then let's move on to educator effectiveness, page 14. Maureen, did you have any comments that you want to make? Folks, what are your thoughts on?
The only thing that I was gonna add, that in goal 7.4, it was originally 2026, and, and that got moved up and changed, and I was very pleased to see that. I think it's important, because we've had that in, I believe, Rule 10, anyway.
Actually, it should be 7.3.
But it will, you know, we've got teachers out there that are having to teach out of their curriculum area or their area of endorsement right now, and they don't, a lot of them don't like having to do that. So this will put pressure on districts.
And make sure it says 7.3, not 7.4.
Yeah, and we've got a change in 7.2 that we caught in the committee that, that will change on 7.2. It says, reach search-based standard, that should be evaluation process, was it, or system?
Yeah, it's system, so it's...
I can't...
Could you read it the way you mean it to be?
So, I'll, I'll read what Brian just gave me, anyway. So by, by 2020, 100% of Nebraska schools will utilize performance standards in a research-based evaluation system for all certificated staff as aligned to Rule 10.
Any questions on page 14? Any questions on the last page of acknowledgement? Okay, so what we will be doing is, we will get these changes that we've talked about today done. We will probably move on the agenda to adopt a strategic plan at the end of our agenda, so that you can look at one more copy before we move to adopt tomorrow, if there seems to be a consensus that we've, with these changes, that we're ready to move forward. Comments?
Can I just say, you know, this is not a perfect document yet, but we've been working on this since January. I think a lot of us felt that it was important that this board constituted, as it is today, approved this. And, you know, we're gonna have a couple of our members that have been very instrumental in this process that are not gonna be with us. We'll have new people coming onboard in January that really won't have a lot of, a lot of background on what we've done, and we've done a lot of very hard work. We've got a strategic planning committee or strategic, you know, going forward. And I think, John, you know, I share some, you know, I understand some of your concerns, and I, I don't think there's anything that will preclude us from saying, gee, I think we missed this. We ought to add this to the strategic plan through the strategic planning committee. And again, I just, I think it's important to move forward on this. We owe it to our stakeholders, we owe it to those folks that have, have given us financial support on this. We've talked about the process of getting this out to those stakeholders and those people that have been involved in, in, in helping us finance this operation or this, this process. You know, we've really made tremendous progress. I mean, we actually know where we're going, I think. And I don't want to pontificate or, you know, carry on for too long here, but that's really important, that what we've done. And again, acknowledging, it's not perfect, but it's just time to move on, and then we can address these issues. And the, the, the big load of work to be done is still by the commissioner and his staff, who are gonna have to develop the strategies to get us to these numbers. And that is so important. If we get, if we can get that done, you know, what we did this year will be terribly, terribly important for the future of education and our children in Nebraska.
Thank you.
Well said, thank you, Pat. Okay, if there's not any other questions around strategic planning, that was the last item on our agenda for today, so we'll move to item five, adjournment. The regularly scheduled meeting, I hear applause there, too. The regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning in this room. Thank you very much.